We'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. At this time, the meeting of the New Bern Board of Aldermen, May 14th meeting will open. And tonight, the prayer will be given by Alderman Bobby Astor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Graham Price. Graham, if you would come forward. Graham is a city employee with the Public Works Department, been working with us for five years now. He is the Public Works Maintenance Supervisor, and he is also a licensed heating and air conditioner contractor. So, he has changed out over forty air conditioning units since he's been employed with the city. Graham, if you would, do prayer for us tonight, please.
Let's pray. Dear only Father, first of all, we want to come to you and thank you for forgiving us this wonderful city to live in, Lord. Thank you for the leadership we have and the good staff that we have running the city, Lord. And please be with the Aldermen and everyone in charge of running the city, helping make wise decisions, Lord. And please just help us to continue making our city a better place, Lord, and just thank you for all you do and just, amen.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and pledge allegiance to the flag of our country. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Man third, would you call him, Rob?
Alderman Beagle here. Alderwoman Harris.
Present.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Atwater.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Bess.
Present.
Alderman Oden.
Here.
Our first order of business would be requests and petitions of citizens. While we're doing this, normally we do this on a new business, but I would like to welcome the, it seems like we have some Boy Scouts in the group tonight. We would like to welcome you, and you are with what group?
Five eighty-four.
Five eighty-four.
Five eighty-four. Tonight, we have Bethany Richardson would like to come up in, Bethany Richards would like to come up and make some comments.
Bethany Richards, four oh five Harbor Drive, four oh five. Since Florence has happened, it's been eight months, I just come tonight, I want to inquire, maybe get answers, possibly help to resolve problems concerning trash and litter pickup. I feel like we've had enough time to kind of get a grasp on some of the litter and debris that the storm caused. There are two major concerns that I have are residential and business slash city property that is not getting taken care of when it comes to trash and debris removal. I think we all care about this town enough that we don't want to see a mess for too long of a time, and I feel like eight months has been enough time for us to kind of get a hold on things. The railroad lot that's there on North Craven Street, I'm not sure how we can get in touch with anybody to help get that cleaned up. It's horrible, and it just keeps, the trash keeps building up in that fenced-in area, and then it's getting blown out along North Craven Street. There are two volunteer organizations that take time out, people are taking time out of their own daily lives to go and clean up New Bern, and I just feel like there are some businesses and some city properties that are not getting tended to, and it's just causing more of a problem for us that are trying to take care of residential and city streets. So, I'm here to kind of maybe ask how, why, is, are we able to fix it as citizens, or, I mean, are there answers? Is there accountability for residential homes that are being neglected? There's not any mowing, the houses are vacant. Is there any accountability for those people? Are we giving them a time limit on getting things taken care of? And businesses, where's the accountability for them to pick up their trash? I mean, most of this is post-Florence debris. It's not just, you know, a Miller Lite bottle on the side of the road. It is storm debris that is still, makes our town look not, you know, we're coming into tourist season, so I'm just hoping that we can make things a little bit more picked up. So, if I could have any advice, if there's anything I can do, if there's any answers for homes, businesses.
Well, let me just, again, this is request petitions of citizens, but sometimes things that are really concerning the city, you know, we don't mind stopping a moment and discussing them. And, you know, we just, the other week, we had a community cleanup, and I don't know how many dumpsters we had for that cleanup. We, we work and partner with communities that want to have development cleanups or particular areas of town. We do those, this is a good time of year to do that. We do have a mowing program that when folks are not taking care of the property, we will do that and assess them. We have mentioned in budget discussions that there, for legal purposes, there are quite a few homes in the, in the downtown, in the New Bern area that we legally, until we go through the due process, cannot demolish that need to be demolished. But, at the same time, there are homes that we are looking for some more aggressive means of, not necessarily draconianly requiring maintenance to the home, but we are looking for volunteer groups. We are looking for some direction, more so from the staff to the concerns of folks like yourself. We are looking at strategic locations for placement of more trash bins and recycling, you know, around certain areas of town, which we've done, and we're looking at some more of those sites. So, does any, Alderman, go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, just a couple, a couple of things. First of all, I have to thank Ms. Richards for her efforts. I mean, she's, she's single-handedly with a small group of people cleaned up Harbor Drive and all of that area down that street with all the debris, and everything that were in the marshes did an incredible job, and she's very concerned with the litter in our town. And I saw, and we spoke about the litter at the railroad, what would be Norfolk Southern Rail Station there. And I want to call on Alderman Astor because he's always had a great relationship with Norfolk Southern, and he actually called and talked to them, so I'm going to let you tell her what they said to us. And I'm, I'm doing this in public because hopefully it puts some pressure on them.
Sure. I've had several conversations with railroad about cleaning that yard up on North Craven Street. We've all taken pictures, we've sent them to some of the top management of the railroad, got their attention very quick. They contacted me back and said they will be sending people down to clean it up. Well, about, what, maybe two months went by, and I contacted them again because it didn't appear that, that didn't a whole lot of anything, you know, accomplished over there. So, I called again, they said, "Well, we cleaned the yard up." And I said, "Well, if you cleaned the yard up, you didn't do a very good job." And I said, "In fact, are you sure you were talking about the one in New Bern, North Carolina?" So, basically, I made, they handed it, called off to some frontline supervisors that's in this area. I made calls with them, they told me they weren't going to do anything else to the yard, period. Said it was a working yard, and they weren't going to do anything else with it. I even tried to convince them to repair the fence, put a new fence up, put some of these slats in it to kind of hide, you know, the, the construction yard, and they said they wouldn't do that. So, they're not willing to do anything. So, if you want to put pressure on them, I'll be glad to give you some phone numbers.
I appreciate that.
In fact, you ready to write one down?
Sure.
Contact Mr. Rob Holloway. And by the way, I let Mr. Holloway know that this was happening tonight.
Yes, we want them, we want the, the public pressure on because that's the only way we're going to get anything done.
Okay, I'm ready.
It's Rob Holloway. And his phone number is three one four nine seven three nine eight three four. And good luck.
Thank you. I mean, I'm at the point where I can even get my crew out there to clean it up. I, I would appreciate a donation towards my nonprofit, but I'd even offer, hey, we've, we've got the manpower, people to go clean it, but just make a donation so that we can at least get it taken care of. I don't want to fight, I just want it cleaned up, it looks terrible.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Because he wasn't willing to do much to help me out.
So, and as for other city property and residential, is there like a time limit for homes that?
Well, what other city properties are you talking about?
What city property?
Yeah, I'm quite interested to know what city property you're talking about that needs cleaned up.
I mean, just various places, the foot of Avenue A, those buildings along back there.
Well, but those are privately owned, that's the problem. They're not public, they're privately owned. So, you talk about where the fire just took place?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's private property, and they have cleaned up back there. I think it's been cleaned up this week, I heard.
Yeah, we were, we were out there three weeks ago, but there's, there's still buildings that have a lot of debris from the storm, and it's, nothing's been touched, so, just curious about.
You can always call the nuisance and abatement, the city attorney's shaking his head, yes, so you can contact Nancy Johnson, who's the nuisance and abatement officer.
Okay.
And you can turn in an address and say, "There's debris here," whatever, and then they would check up and follow up on it.
Okay. And residential, is there like a year? Do they have a year?
Ms. Richards, you sent me some pictures. Correct. And I did turn them over to the Developmental Services Office, Mr. Jeffrey Gary's office, and the process with that, if it's residential property, there's a process in law where they have to send a homeowner letter, you know, giving them a brief detail of what needs to be done to the property, and then if, if the homeowner does not take care of that property in that timeframe, then the city will act on it, and then that residence, that owner will be billed. So, it is a process we go through, and believe me, I did not forget you, I turned that information over. I think I emailed you back.
You did. I, I was just wondering what the eventual outcome could possibly, I mean, we're, several of us are still living among these homes and buildings, and it's just not a good situation.
And I understand what you're saying, because I went over and viewed the area that you were speaking of, and I, I, believe me, I completely understand, and hopefully this will be handled ASAP.
Okay. I appreciate it, thank you all.
You're welcome.
Please call, you know, again, we have several different volunteer groups, be glad to work with you on that, and please give me a call, or we'll talk some more and try to coordinate some things. And again, any site-specific problems you're, you're referring to, we'd be glad, I'd be glad to help you, I'd be glad to be able to look at it with you.
Okay.
Other Aldermen, I'm sure will be glad too, but we, we really appreciate you coming up and being concerned, because this is what, I mean, we want a clean city, and that's part of what we've been trying to do the last couple of years with more trash containers and things like that, because people will, they will throw things in a trash container if there's one to throw in. The problem is, is that haven't been some, and so again, Mr. Stevens, don't you have some locations we were talking about putting some additional containers?
Yes, I mean, we can, we've, we constantly try to identify locations where we have heavy trash generators, if you want to call it that, which are your commercial establishments, your fast food restaurants, you know, grocery stores with little plastic bags flying all over the place, you know, things like that, but those are certainly areas that we have identified. I know Mr. Montane placed several of those out over the past couple of years in some of those areas that generate a lot of the, I guess, nuisance trash, if you want to call it that. Now, if it comes to debris-related type stuff, that if it's related to hurricane debris that people haven't cleaned up, yeah, that's a different story. And, and you're correct, I would advise Ms. Richard, Ms. Richards to contact our nuisance abatement officer with specific addresses that they can identify, and then they can follow up and check on those, and basically put people on notice that if they don't clean it up, they give them a certain amount of time, if not, they start getting fines. And then, same thing with the mowing of high lots, as far as grass goes, those are, that's another thing that we can also address, if there's grass that needs to be mowed in certain places that's being unkept, then we can address those, but we need to follow the proper protocols because we have to do that based on our ordinance and our statutes.
So, again, and again, I really appreciate you doing this. I'm going to give everybody a little, I was talking to Mayor Vansborough a couple of months ago, and we were talking about litter. He walks in the morning like many New Bernians, and picks litter up, which I'm, just quite a few people do some Williams and others. And where he walks every day, just about, there's this same fast food bag and leftovers from eating a sandwich and some other stuff. And so, you know, he knows this town really well, so it's not there the night before, it's always there in the morning, so obviously, it's probably happening early in the morning, somebody eating breakfast. So, he got a policeman to go there and just stay, be stationary here for a couple of hours, and sure enough, this person came by, and it was a person from New Bern that has a job in Vansborough that evidently stops by a local fast food in New Bern and eats it on the way over there. And the last thing they do before they go to, to their employment is they run way down and throw the trash out! And, you know, this is just not acceptable. It's not acceptable in New Bern, it's not acceptable in Vansborough, but the reason I'm saying that is, is it's totally a culture problem. And, and this is probably a very professional person that thinks that that trash belongs on the sidewalk of Vansborough instead of in the foot of the car till he, he or she can go properly discard it. And so, you know, part of what we need to do, and Bethany, I again appreciate you being here, is we've got to change that culture. I mean, you can put all the trash cans you want out there, but until you get people to start changing conditioning behavior, you know, there's, there's four legs to that stool we're going to have to work on. So, we really do appreciate you coming up. And I was very disappointed here that, that Mayor was telling that story, because there's plenty more of those where that one came from. So, if you see anything, if you email me, I'll forward it to the manager, the abatement officer, and the Alderman of whichever ward what you're sending me happens to be a problem.
Okay. Thanks for your time.
Hey, thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Woods, would you come up, sir? James Woods.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Aldermen. My name is James O. Woods, Jr. I stay at nineteen zero three Country Club Road here in New Bern. My concern is, I would like to see or ask, I know the city is not responsible, but if someone could talk to DOT about putting a left turn light on the eastbound side, turning on the eastbound side of Highway seventy. Even before the construction, there was a problem of trying to turn left at certain times of the day. Now, it's almost impossible to turn left on going eastbound seventy. We have to come all, we have to come all the way through the city to get out towards Walmart. I don't know if that's in the plans, but something really needs to be done. So, that, that's my concern.
Can I ask this real quick, Mr. Woods? Specifically, which direction are you?
I'm going eat, I'm, I'm heading up Country Club, heading up Country Club, coming into the city. See, there's one turning on the westbound already, but there's not one on the eastbound side. And that is, and that is the only left turn light getting on seventy that does not have a left turn light.
Is that getting?
I'm turning eastbound, going, I'm going eastbound, going towards the mall on Country Club. I'm turning left from, if you're coming from Trent Woods, I'm turning left going eastbound on seventy.
That would be westbound.
By, by Lawson Creek.
That's westbound.
No, it's eastbound. Westbound has a turn light. Westbound has a turning light.
Eastbound is going back towards Havlock.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I stand corrected. Westbound, okay, westbound.
Westbound.
Yes, westbound.
What you were talking about, there, is there a light there to turn left to go?
It's a light, it's a light to turn left to go to Havlock, but there's not a light to turn left to go to Kinston.
Okay.
And that is the only intersection on Highway seventy bypass that does not have.
Okay.
And it's almost next to impossible now to turn left if you want to go to the mall. You already got to, got to come through the city, and, and we know it's already filed up with the traffic and everything, but, I mean, even this evening, it was a line of cars trying to turn left. Thank you.
Take a look at that. Anything else? Okay, any other petitions of citizens?
I'd like to make a petition to approve the consent agenda.
Let's go with the consent agenda this time, from four through eight.
To make a motion.
Did you do that? Is that what you said? I'm sorry, I thought you said you wanted to go to the.
To second agenda.
Okay. And the second was?
I'm second.
Thank you. Okay, you have a motion to second, is there any discussion? I want to pay the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Or oppose the same, motion carries.
I'd like to make a petition to approve the consent agenda.
Let's go with the consent agenda this time, from four through eight.
To make a motion.
Oh, did you do that? Is that what you said? I'm sorry, I thought you said you wanted to go to the.
To second agenda.
Okay. And the second was?
I'm second.
Thank you. Okay, you have a motion to second, is there any discussion? I want to pay the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Or oppose the same, motion carries. This time, we're going to go with item number nine.
Thank you, Mayor members of the board. Item number nine is a presentation on the Juneteenth celebrations. At this time, we'd like to ask Talina Massey to come up, who's in attendance, to discuss the plans for the upcoming Juneteenth celebration.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Aldermen, citizens of New Bern, citizens of Buffalo, New York.
My mom's here, sorry.
Awesome.
My name's Talina Massey, one twenty-six, Linden Rain, New Bern. It feels like just a year ago, I was here asking for a proclamation to recognize Juneteenth for the one day we had at Triumph Palace, and thankfully, it's organically grown to include more than ten days now, and actually seeing activity all over the city for the entire month of June. Just a little background history for those of you who may not have attended any of the Juneteenth lectures. Juneteenth is the oldest known observance of the ending of slavery in the United States. According to historical records, the celebration began on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, the day Major General Gordon Granger of the Union Army rode into Galveston, Texas, in the final execution of the Emancipation Proclamation. According to Reginald Green, the celebration of Juneteenth is not only a showcase event of the African-American community's positive contributions to the American way of life, but it also makes a statement for all Americans that the United States is truly the land of the free. Juneteenth is an expression, an extension of American freedom, and like the Fourth of July, a time for all Americans to celebrate our independence, human rights, civil rights, and freedom. So, this year, we have a full week of activities concentrated during Monday, June seventeenth, to Sunday, June twenty-third. On the fourteenth of June, which is the Friday prior to, we actually have the Juneteenth opening reception for the Craven Arts Council at the Bank of Arts. I've also been informed by Chief Summers that June eighth, there will be Peace and Unity Day for the Bad Faith Community Group, which falls right in line with kind of the message that's going on that month either way, so it's awesome, awesome activity. On June seventeenth, there will be a kickoff podcast with Charles Tindell to discuss all of the activities that are occurring. On June seventeenth, or excuse me, June eighteenth, that Tuesday, we will have a Community Service and Health Day at the Omega Center, where we have multiple volunteers doing health screenings, doing mental health conversations and screenings, doing prostate screenings, and as well as local businesses like BrainTap, who will be allowing me to demo some more current stress relief factors and sleep management to deal with some of the, the issues that our community faces. On Wednesday, the newly formed African-American Heritage and Cultural Center of New Bern is planning a Juneteenth celebration. It's their soft launch, and that's at four oh eight Hancock Street. On Thursday, June twentieth, the Triumph Palace is doing our lecture series again. Last year, we brought in, if some of you remember, Donald Peyton, which was a historian from Texas. This year, I'm proud to say, we were able to fly in a wonderful woman by the name of Eva Doyle from my hometown of Buffalo, New York, who is, just a little background, she is a retired Buffalo public school teacher with thirty years of classroom teaching. She lectures extensively on topics in African and American history throughout Western New York. Her column, Eye on History, is now in its thirty-sixth year of publication. She's written over eleven books, and continues to do outstanding things in the community to which she is recognized, one of which, they have a Freedom Wall that they recently dedicated in that city, and she's one of the people that are on it. So, amazing lady who's coming that evening. Included in that presentation as well, we'll also have our Youth of Pace performing, doing an image theater performance, and we also have some youth poetry, which is through the Yale organization. So, we were able to, as you can see, really collaborate with the community, with not-for-profits, with for-profit businesses, and different entities to be able to bring a plethora of events that everyone can kind of celebrate, whether you like music, or entertainment, or history, there's something for everybody that week. So, to wrap it up, our young professionals will be, will do a celebration of cultures, rooftop social, I bring in Wilson. Saturday, we have teamed up with the Greater Duffy Field Residence Council to bring Dufffest that weekend. And Sunday, we've talked to some of our local churches, who will do a fellowship sermon that day, as well as the Omega Center will be offering a gospel concert. Most of these events are free to the public. There are a few events that are paid, but at a reduced price. So, I've sent some of this information to Ms. Brenda, so that you can read through it and see. I have an example of the Craven Arts press release, I have the Duffy Field, Dufffest flyer, and I also have an example of how our local businesses are actually getting involved with Juneteenth in that week, offering discounts on their services. There's one particular barber shop is offering two-dollar haircuts because of the second year we're doing Juneteenth. So, just to conclude, I just wanted to give you guys an update, just to show you exactly how it's grown since last year. I was on the phone this afternoon with the Mayor of Kinston, who is excited about it and wants to collaborate and do some more things in the future with Juneteenth and the city of New Bern. So, if there's anyone who's interested in the community and getting involved, we're still taking information. We compiled it all on the Juneteenth of New Bern Facebook page, so you can go there and find out what's going on, and when, and how, and if you have any questions, feel free to send it to me. I am the organizer, but I am just another community collaborator in all that's going on here. So, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you for that update. This time, we're going to have item number ten, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor members of the board. Item number ten, a presentation on the utility prepaid system. Staff and representative of Exeleron are here in attendance to provide an overview and demonstration of the new prepaid system for our utility customers who wish to use it in that matter. So, at this point, I'm going to refer over to JR, and he can, he can introduce our speaker.
Good evening, my name's Craig Hudson. I'm with Exeleron Software in Dallas, Texas, and I appreciate your, your taking the time this out, this evening, to hear a little bit about the new program that your city utilities is implementing. It's prepaid. And I'm going to say right off the bat, I really dislike pre, PowerPoint slides. I think everybody has a copy of the slide deck. I'm not going to go through twenty slides and bore you to death. I use them strictly as talking points, and I much prefer the question and answer format, so I'll go ahead and kick things off. Again, we've been doing this for thirteen years, and I've compiled a list of what I like, the, probably the most commonly asked questions that I get when I do presentations. First and foremost, people say, "Well, how many people will sign up for prepaid?" Well, for, the most important thing to remember about prepaid is it's a voluntary program. It's not, it's not a punitive measure, it's an option to a, to a regular monthly bill, so people can voluntarily sign up for it. If they dislike it or choose not to do it, they can just as easily get off of prepaid. But, the average utility that we see is going to get about a ten to fifteen percent penetration of customers that voluntarily sign up. That's changing over time. With the change in demographics, because of some of the feature and functionality that come with the program, it gives customers the ability to access their information in real time, and this new generation called the millennials, that's their, that's their favorite mode of operation. They want real-time satisfaction, they want to see what's going on now. They don't want to get a paper bill out of a mailbox and write a check, they want to pull their phone out of their pocket and see how much they've used and paid. So, that ten to fifteen percent over the coming years, I think, is going to increase. We're seeing that in some of our more mature utilities that have been doing it longer, they're getting close to twenty, twenty-five percent. Another thing that we always hear is, well, prepaid customers self-disconnect so they can save energy. That couldn't be further from the truth. We know that over half the people that sign up for prepaid never get disconnected. Those that do are usually off for less than fifteen minutes, because once they make their Because once they make their payment, their service is reconnected immediately, and it's basically a temporary interruption of service as opposed to a disconnect. We know that if we communicate properly to those customers that allow their balance to get below zero, eighty percent of those will never experience a disconnect because they have at least twenty-four hours to come in and make a payment to avoid that disconnect. And again, the average time for disconnect to reconnect, fifteen to twenty minutes for over ninety percent of the customers. So real briefly, how does prepaid work? Well, it's, it's, it's very simple analogy, it's just like the gasoline in your car. You, you, you purchase, you, you place money in your account, we calculate a daily bill, we deduct the previous day's charges from your credit balance, and we communicate with you as to the status of that balance. When your balance starts to run low, you can get a notification or an alert to tell you it's time to put some more money in your account. I kind of equate that to the little amber light on your gas gauge, you know? Nobody really knows how much further you can drive when that light comes on, but you know it's time to take action. That's kind of how the alerts work as well. So the nice thing about prepaid for your consumer, your customer, is they're no longer gonna receive a monthly bill. In their world, they're gonna be billed daily. So they don't have to worry about saving up two or three hundred dollars to pay a big bill at the end of the month. We give them an accurate accounting of what they're using on a daily basis. How many of you can tell me within fifty cents what your utility bill was yesterday? Probably nobody in this room. Prepaid customers, about ninety percent of them can usually tell you within ten to fifteen cents on any given day what their previous day's usage was. That in turn drives customers to be more aware of the cost, which tends to make them better stewards of their, of their energy. They, they tend to use a little bit less because they know, they see what they're, what they're using on a daily basis. It simplifies your customer service as well. There's no more negotiation with a prepaid customer. I, I think if you talk to any of your customer service reps in the utility department, they'll tell you the majority of their phone calls are payment arrangements. People that get a big bill at the end of the month, they can't pay their bill, they feel bad, they call one of your employees. Your employees feel bad because they can only help them so much, and eventually that customer gets disconnected anyway. So in prepaid, there is no payment arrangements. They start out with a credit balance, they're told on a daily basis how much they're using, and they're told when it's time to recharge, just like it's time to put gasoline in your car. But there's nothing that the utility employee can do to negotiate or give, give them a few more days. But the good news is, most customers only have to put a few dollars in, in their account to maintain their service. They don't have to pay a three or four or five hundred dollar bill, okay? So it, it also helps out on the customer service side. I'm not gonna go through all these steps of how it's created, but the bottom line is, the customer gets a prepaid account, they start out with a credit balance, that balance is reduced each day, and they make a series of payments throughout the course of the month. But they make it, they make the payments when it's convenient for them, not when they're being told they have a due date on a bill, pay this or else. There's no more or else in prepaid. We know that the average prepaid customer's gonna make about four and a half payments a month. That typically coincides with Friday paydays, because a lot of people get paid on Fridays. And those people typically make pretty good money, but a lot of them have a hard time budgeting that money and saving up to pay one bill at the end of the month. So prepaid fits their lifestyle much better. You can put as little or as much into your account as you choose, and, and you're not gonna be getting late notices, disconnect fees, late fees. You simply maintain your credit balance, you maintain your service. Now, for those that, for those that have a large outstanding balance to start, they can't establish a credit balance initially. So we have this concept called My Usage Assist. And this is simply a prepaid payment arrangement. Unlike a traditional payment arrangement where you have a dollar component and a time component, pay me this much by this time or else, we simply say, put as much of that unpaid balance in the My Usage Assist account as needed, all right? And the customer agrees to allow a percentage of each payment to go towards paying down that balance. That balance can never get any larger because typically you do not charge late fees on that outstanding balance once they're in prepaid, and they can't incur any future debt because they're maintaining a credit balance going forward. In addition to electricity, we can also do prepaid for all of your other services. So gas, water, sewer, trash, any other, any other fixed monthly charges that you may have can be prorated and charged on a daily basis as well. So you don't get prepaid electric and then you get a bill for all your other services. All of your services can be combined into one. So they get one prepaid balance.
Could you be able to see the daily amounts for water and sewer, just like you can see for electric?
Absolutely. If I don't run out of time, I'll show you that real quick. Disconnects, all disconnects occur at the same time every day for prepaid customers. You don't have to worry about your customers getting disconnected at three o'clock in the morning, like the old days in prepaid. There's no doomsday clock hanging on the wall. And as I mentioned before, based on your business rules, all prepaid customers will have at least a twenty-four hour grace period. And I was informed by staff that you're not gonna, they're not gonna do disconnects on weekends or holidays. So it's conceivable that you could have a zero balance or a negative balance on Friday, and you wouldn't get disconnected until Monday morning. Okay, so that gives the customer plenty of time to recharge their account, okay? If they do get disconnected, the reconnect happens usually within ten minutes, once that payment's been posted, and that's seven by twenty-four. So depending on the payment method that they choose, if they make a payment through the mobile app or online, as soon as that payment posts, we'll immediately send a command to reconnect that service seven by twenty-four.
Well, obviously, everything's on the credit card, correct?
It doesn't have to be. We have a lot of customers that make cash payments. Now, obviously, your cash payment options are limited after hours, but if they come into the office and make a cash payment, they're gonna get that same response as they would on a credit card.
But if they do it on a credit card on the app, where they charge the credit card fee like somebody would be charged now?
No. Alderman, we are, the City of New Bern is absorbing the, the fee associated with that for, for these customers to help get this program off the, off the ground. In addition, we are not doing any payments, taking any payments within the office. Everything is going to be, is going to be done either through the app or through the one eight hundred number or online.
Okay, so credit card without any fees associated with it?
Credit card, debit card.
But if somebody comes in now, or somebody tries to pay a bill not through prepaid, on credit card, they're charged the fee?
They're charged the fee, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. A key part of a, of a successful prepaid program is a communication capability, and this is what our product's built around, is our communication platform. If this system works properly, the number of phone calls that your customer service receives will drop dramatically. There's, there's several different types of alerts that the customer can receive. We talked about the low balance, which is based on a threshold that customers set. We have a pending disconnect alert, which tells them before they're disconnected, this is the date and time the disconnect is going to occur, and this is how much you need to pay to avoid that disconnect. And they'll get that at least twice, the day they go negative and the day before, or the day they get disconnected in the morning. We also have things like high usage alert and payment confirmations and disconnect, reconnect confirmations. The nice thing about it is the customer can pick and choose the delivery method. Not everybody gets text messages, not everybody does emails. Some people still do old-fashioned phone calls. A lot of people use a mobile app. So we do push notifications, email, text, and phone calls, and the customer can set that up and pick and choose the delivery method that's most convenient for them.
So, so what happens if a customer, I know they, they get their alerts and they get them what their balance is, but they're, they experience a crisis and hardship, and they can't actually put that money back into the account at that time? So what would they even have to do, call the office to get? Would they get an extension or?
No, there is no extensions in prepaid. And if somebody has a medical emergency, right, there's, there's always, there's always gonna be exceptions to the rule. Like, if someone depends on their electric service for life support, they're not a good candidate for prepaid. If someone's in a dire situation like you're speaking of, they're probably not a good candidate for prepaid, okay? So it's not, this isn't for everybody. And there's gonna be times when people will get on prepaid and say, you know what, this won't work for me. It's not a one-way street. They can easily go back to getting, they can just go back into the office, say, look, I wanna get off of prepaid. They may be required to put their deposit back up, because one of the advantages is, if you enroll and you have a deposit on hand, your existing deposit will be, be applied to help pay down your outstanding balance or increase your credit if you don't have an outstanding balance, right? Now, from, from accounting perspective, deposits are a liability on the books. And most utilities don't like deposits, it's, it's a necessary evil. They have to maintain that because of the creditworthiness of some customers. But in the event of prepaid, there's no need to hold a deposit because there's no more credit risk, okay? So there's a lot of advantages for both the utility and the customer when it comes to this option.
So we have criteria now on how long we hold deposits and when we release those back to the customer.
Yes, sir.
If a customer made a deposit six months ago, and they decide they wanna try prepaid, will we immediately take that deposit they made six months ago, put it on their prepaid account?
Yes, sir.
And then two months later, they decide prepaid doesn't work, they go back to the old system, they've gotta come up with a new deposit?
Correct.
And?
And I, I believe that's part of your terms and conditions. I was shown a copy of, of the agreement today, and it very, very clearly states on there that if you choose to come off of prepaid, you will be required to reinstate your deposit. And I believe they also have a six-month period, they have to stay in prepaid for six months, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
So that, so that deposit still is five hundred dollars?
Yes, that's the cap, yes ma'am.
How expensive is to run this program?
I haven't seen your contract, I'm in sales, maybe you can speak to the fees? I don't wanna misquote.
Sorry, Alderman McKenzie, I wasn't fully prepared for that question. Uh, it, I believe it's approximately thirty... Please don't quote me on this, but it's, it's a couple thousand dollars a month, plus there are some fees associated per, for individual, individual notifications.
Communications, yes.
Communication issues. Uh, we try to minimize that as much as possible.
I can speak to the con, I mean, our basic contract, we have a minimum monthly fee, and it's usually, and it's based on the number of people that are in prepaid. Our MSRP is twenty cents per prepaid account per day, which comes out to roughly six dollars a month per prepaid account, all right? Now, I think we may have negotiated a different deal, I don't, I don't have the, the exact contract, but... So that two thousand dollars covers the first, that's two thousand divided by six, three hundred, maybe three hundred and fifty customers. Once you, once you reach that threshold, then it's an additional, it's six dollars per each one after that. So it's a minimum monthly fee of two thousand dollars a month, plus communication charges, and that runs somewhere between forty and sixty cents per customer, and that's based on five cent phone calls and four cents per text message. And we're seeing on average right now, it's about forty, forty to fifty cents a month. I'm sorry?
That's what you get.
That's, yeah, and that cover, that, that's, that's not even marked up on our side. That's our cost for delivering those phone calls and text messages. But the two, it's six, six dollars a month per prepaid account with a minimum of two thousand a month.
Okay, thank you.
Right? Um, I'm probably running out of time, so I wanna open it up for questions, specific questions. I came here to answer questions, not lectures, so. Do y'all have any other questions about prepaid, any, anything I didn't cover?
Well, let me ask you this, how many, I know there's probably other providers, but the big question would be, other municipalities that are doing it, do they offer a discount or a favorable rate structure to customers that go on prepaid?
That has been mentioned several times, to my knowledge. I don't believe, I actually have our Director of Customer Service here. Do you know of anybody that offers a discount rate for prepaid?
No. No, they actually charge the same rate for prepaid, so there's not a cost, except for that general value charge. Which is fact, you didn't invest the savings if you, if you talk about the cost of utility savings outweigh the cost that you talked about.
Sure. Uh, what most, what, what all of our customers to date, we've turned up over a hundred and twenty utilities, from co-ops, municipalities, and IOUs. We currently have about sixty-five that are in production. Um, we have a few in this area, LaGrange is one of them, right? But the average, the, the, the cost per customer is seventy-two dollars per year, if you do six dollars a month, right? What we see in savings to the customers, that's a huge savings to a lot of customers, because a lot of them pay three to four times that, just in late fees and disconnect fees in the course of a year. What some utilities do is they actually pass that six dollars a month along to the customer as a customer charge. You, you all have chosen to subsidize that, which is fine, but you're gonna cut down on your truck rolls, your customer service calls. There's a lot of savings to be, to be realized by offering prepaid on the utility side, as well as the benefits for the customer. So it really is a win-win, that sounds like a marketing term, but both the, the churn rate on prepaid right now today is less than a half a percent. That's the people that voluntarily wanna get off of prepaid when you take out the move-outs. Obviously, when you think about people in rental properties, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of turnover there, but if you remove those from, those numbers from the statistics, less than a half a percent of people that sign up for prepaid ever come in and say, I don't like this, I want off. So it works, it's, it's a wonderful program for the utility and the customer.
Well, I will say, I've been on it for, what, almost a year?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I love me some prepaid.
You're on prepaid?
Yes.
Well, there's a testimonial.
Yes, I love it, it, it works well. But you're saying that, um, we can go into the system and change how many times we get alerts?
Yes.
So like an email?
Well, it depends on whose system you're on.
Um, what you mean?
Are you with New Bern?
Yes.
So you're on the New Bern system? Oh, well, yes.
We have at least ten customers.
You can do it through the mobile app, or you can do it online.
Okay.
You can actually change your settings, yeah. And, and we encourage the customer to be able to be self-serve. You shouldn't have to call the utility if you wanna change a phone number or an email address. You can do that through the mobile app. Uh, real quick, and I know I'm out of time, and I apologize to whoever's behind me, but I'll, I'll sit down here in a second. This is a copy of the mobile app, uh, some screenshots. You can make credit card payments through the mobile app. You can also make them online, or you can make them over the phone. This is just the basic screens that you see on the mobile app that show the daily usage. We can also show hourly usage and the, and the transaction history. And again, I think y'all have copies of these slides, so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on them. This is the, this is the web portal. If you log into the web, this is what you see, if you're going, if you're going through, through a browser. This is an account summary page. Those green bars represent the total amount that it costs the customer each day for that service. That's not usage, that's the total charge. So if you include your other services, as you mouse over those green bars, it'll tell you each day how much was, came out of your account. If you wanna drill down further, you can go to the account summary page, this is an eye chart, uh, but you can actually see the details that make up those charges. So somebody asked earlier, can you see water charges or trash charge? You can see that daily charge if you, if you look in the, on the transaction history page, all right?
I have a question for you.
All right.
If a customer chooses not to do prepaid, but would like to have the option of monitoring their day-to-day activity, is that possible?
Perfect segue from my last slide, it's called Usage Monitor. We offer, we offer all of the functionality, the web portal, the communications, the mobile app, the IVR, and the payments for all of your customers, and we don't charge anything extra for your non-prepaid customers. So you could have two thousand people on prepaid, and twenty thousand people use the system for no additional charge, right?
So this will, will this work for commercial accounts as well as residential?
Single-phase two-hundred amp is all we do, and that has to do with the availability of the data. There's a lot more complex data that comes from large commercial account. Now, if it's small commercial, you absolutely can. So if you got a hair salon, or a bookstore or something, it just has a single-phase two-hundred amp meter, you can set up a separate rate and have a small commercial rate for prepaid, excuse me. But if you're talking about bigger C and I, commercial industrial, they probably wouldn't be good candidates for prepaid anyway.
Oh, so JR, so the individuals that right now have the pay going and do paper, and we use that old dusty system, are we, are they gonna be transferred over to this if they don't decide to do prepaid and you can pay through this system? Cause you, all right, so when you go now onto the website, it brings you to a third party, and you get charged the four ninety-five?
Yes, ma'am.
So when we transition, we'll actually all transition over to?
Uh, only those that are on prepaid.
So what if you wanna just view like he was just talking about?
If you, if you just wanna view, you just go, you'll get a login, you just go in, and you can just view, you, you, your data, and you can see, you, you, the, the amounts, uh, daily consumption. However, if you are, if, you won't be able to make a payment unless you're actually on prepaid, so.
When will this be available?
It's available right now. We rolled it out two weeks ago, and started, we've signed up, we have ten, we have ten total, ten total people on it. As of right now, we have four that were, of those were our beta customers, so we've signed up six actual regular customers at this point, so.
How are you letting our customers know this is available to them? Are we gonna do a little educational video or something on our TV station?
That's actually one of, that's actually one of the things we will be, we are looking at doing. I wanna get with, uh, get with our PDI, Colleen Roberts, to discuss the, a possible video, put something, maybe put something on Facebook, those sorts of things. Uh, you know, this is actually part of the kickoff right now, is, is the presentation to the board, to make sure that you all are aware to hopefully trumpet this, trumpet this new program and get it out there. I think it's going to be very helpful to those folks that are, that have deposits and have had the recurring issues and, and that frequently have to come into the UBO to get payment arrangements and that sort of thing, so.
Thank you.
And we, and we, we have a wealth of information that we've collected over the years from other utilities that they've been willing to share with us. So as far as marketing materials, sample videos, checklists, flyers, we make all that available to you all for, if you can reuse it any way you see fit. So we, we want to, we're, you're not just signing a software agreement with us. We're, we're forming a partnership here for the life of the contract, because we, your success is our success. The more people you get in the program, the better, the more you're going to benefit, and the more we're going to benefit. So we'll work, we actually come back on site for refresher training at least once a year. We, we, we look and see what's working. We sit down with you and consult with you to help you make sure your program, you're getting the most out of the program, so.
I have one more question. JR.
Yes, ma'am.
When you transfer over, say I had a three-hundred-dollar bill, and I had a deposit of five hundred.
Yes, ma'am.
That three-hundred-dollar bill is automatically put into kind of like a little holding place, and then I have a credit of five hundred, and then after the five hundred is gone, and I start to make payments, twenty-five percent of my payment will go to the balance that I owe you?
Yes, ma'am. That's a, that's a, that's a good summary. What, basically, what happens is when somebody comes in and signs up for a new account, we will take that, take any deposit that they have and apply it to that balance.
Okay.
Uh, that they have. So if they have an outstanding bill, like you said, of three hundred dollars, that five hundred dollar deposit will get applied to that balance. Uh, and what will roll into, and that credit that they have, in addition to any consumption that they have from the date of the last bill to the date they get on prepaid, that's all gets put into, into an account balance on this, on the system. Craig, can you roll that back to?
Sure.
That, once you.
Yeah, I, I think, and I, I went through this very quickly, but, but what you're, what, I'm sorry. In order, when you enroll in prepaid, not only do you have an outstanding balance, but you, we also have to calculate any charges that you've accumulated since your last bill.
Right.
So it's like a final bill calculation. And the prepaid customer candidate has to pay that all the way up to the current day. If they can't pay that, they can put all or some of that in their, in their My Usage System.
That's what I was about to say, that was the benefit that.
Yes, ma'am.
We should talk about, because a lot of people have outstanding bills.
That, that's a great, that's a great, great thing to bring up, because the thirty-five oh eight that's showing there in this thing, that's, that's the current balance. That's exactly what you're describing and what Craig's describing. One of the things that we are doing is we're actually, in, in order to get people on, we're providing them with a fifty-dollar balance on the account, okay? And as, that's part of their initial setup, and that's, and they were paid that back. It's not free money.
Right.
Bless you. So that's not free money. They, so they have, they do have to pay that back. And how they pay that back is every time they make a payment on prepaid, twenty-five percent of that payment goes towards that, that current balance. So that's how we're able to also work down any, any previous balances that customers have.
So we don't lose that one?
So we don't lose that on any money, yes, ma'am.
Still, that was a great feature.
People often ask me, well, if I put a thousand dollars in this debt assist account, and I give their deposit back, what's to keep them from leaving? And my answer is always, what's to keep them from leaving right now? That what you've done by putting them on prepaid is you've eliminated that, you've eliminated that fight-or-flight response, because
Right.
the main reason they leave isn't because of the thousand dollars, it's because of that, that final disconnect notice they have laying on the kitchen table. And they're never going to get one of those as prepaid. And all they have to worry about is putting a little bit of money in their account as frequent as they need to, to keep the credit balance. And while, without even thinking about it, they're paying down that outstanding balance. I heard a story today of one of your prepaid customers comes in every day and makes five or six-dollar payment. And she loves it, because that's her lifestyle. That's the same kind of person that stops at the gas station every day and puts five dollars' worth of gas in the car. You ask them to fill up their tank, they think you're crazy. You can't do that. But over the course of a month, the five-dollar-a-day person's bought the same amount of gas as the person that fills up three times a month. It's just a different way of managing your money, and that's what prepaid brings to the table. I've went way over my time, and I appreciate it.
I have one question.
I'm not going to leave, but I won't say anything else unless you have a question.
You said you would come down once a year to train the individuals? How many people are you talking about training for this? Training to do the?
The training is for the customer service reps.
How many, how many are you talking about?
How many, how many do you have?
We, we have four C, we have four CSRs. They are all trained on this program, as well as the account services supervisor that oversees them. Our building services supervisor has been training our account, as well as our energy management specialist, myself, and our utility business office manager. We've all been trained on the program and how to utilize it.
So how many people is that altogether?
Of. Nine.
We don't charge extra for training. The only, the only expense for the training is travel expense for our trainer to come here, but we don't charge for the training. There's no annual, there's no annual maintenance fees. It's just a monthly pay-as-you-go, pay-as-you-grow program, so.
Pay as you grow.
Pay as you grow. Pay as you go, pay as you grow.
Okay.
That sounds good to me.
Thank you.
Alder. Yes, sir. How many of your customers pass along that usage fee to their customers?
Uh, ninety-five percent of them.
So we're in the five percent that chose not to do that. So JR, correct me if I'm wrong, we're, we're anticipating our past dues, our, our fees essentially to go down.
Yes, sir.
So where is the funding coming from to pay for the program itself?
Uh, it's just going to be as part of our, it's just built into our operation, operating budget at the moment. It's something we had discussed early on. And at the time, nobody was interested in, in that. The, the initial discussions were to not do that, so we can let the program grow.
I don't, I don't recall us discussing that, but maybe it was me. I may have missed that.
I don't remember, I, I don't remember who we discussed it with, but I know there, there's been some, there were some initial discussions on that a long time ago.
And do, do you anticipate any issues with someone that may not want to be on prepaid, but pays their bill monthly online, still paying four ninety-five when they could go to prepaid, which essentially would probably cost us operational dollars if they get on prepaid, the way I understand it. Why wouldn't I just get off with paying four ninety-five a month and just get on prepaid?
You, you can do that. You can do that. It's, uh, it's entirely up to the, it's entirely up to the person. Uh, I think what's going to happen is that at some point, we are going to, you know, as the, as the program grows, like I said, we only have ten people on it right now. Uh, so as the program grows, we will have to review and see if we want to expand that out and add, and add the fee.
So that at some point, some point in time, there'll be a, a break-even, where the more people get on it, the lower your fee revenue is going to be.
Correct.
And if more people get on it, and we have less revenue fee, then we've got a revenue issue because our costs are higher.
Yes, sir. And then, so we will, so we will need to review that, review that at some point. Like I said, with ten people on it right now, it's, it's not, we're just, we're trying to grow the program. So right now, absorbing the fee makes sense, but, but at some point, it does need to be addressed, and we will need to, we will need to look at that.
We have seen several case studies over the last thirteen years of many utilities that started out not charging, and then coming back later and start charging for the program. And the only complaint that customers had is, why didn't you charge me for this from the, from the start? Nobody, to my knowledge, I don't know of any customer that's ever quit the program because of the six dollars a month. Because it's simple math. They can quickly see how much money they save in a year by, by going on prepaid, just on late fees and disconnect fees. So it's, the, the six dollars, to me, is, or that, it's really twenty cents a day, because again, these customers are on a daily bill cycle. They don't, they don't have a concept of a monthly bill anymore. And you, when you explain the benefits of the program and say, oh, by the way, this is going to cost you twenty cents a day, it's like, sign me up. Where do I sign? So, but, but I'm not trying to sway the, the decision either way. I got the question, and I answered it. And there are a few utilities that do subsidize, and we have a few more that, that split it, that subsidize half and the customer pays half. So it's, it, that's completely up to you guys, how, you know, what you think's best.
So we have about seventeen thousand five hundred customers, I think, on the grid. And if it went ten percent, that would be seventeen hundred customers, let's round it to two, and it's two thousand a month, did you say, plus seventy-two a year?
Not plus. The first, the first two, two thousand dollars covers the first group of customers.
Right.
Once, once it's, the six dollars a month exceeds the two thousand, then it, it adds on top of that, so if it was.
Well, and if we, if that goes away, and it's seventy-two times two thousand, so we know this is about fifteen thousand a year, is that what that figure would be? If you, you know, we have seventeen, we have twenty-one thousand customers, but seventeen-five over on the grid. And so if you take that times the seventy-two and round it to two thousand?
Yeah, yeah, if you're, oh, you're thinking the annual number, yeah.
So, in other words, what I'm trying to say is that, I don't even remember, four or five years ago, we, we started out with the AMI program. Now, what, how it was, by the time we, we finished the AMI model, we hoped to be able to state-of-the-art offer our customers every opportunity to conveniently do business with the city, and this is part of that was the prepaid. What I was under to understand is that we couldn't do prepaid until we had the total implementation of the AMI program.
Uh, there, there's, there's many cases of utilities that start out deploying their AMI, and they're prepaid at the same time, and they use the, the prepaid enrollments as their early deployment strategy for the new meters. You're going to get a new meter anyway, so if you come in and sign up and you don't have one, we do a service order. We send a truck out, and we put a new meter on your pole, and you're in the program, and you've got the new meter. Other, other utilities have infrastructure issues and stuff. They can't do it that way, so they have to, they have to get a more mature deployment before they can do it. I don't know what your situation is.
Are we one hundred percent AMI yet?
No.
What, what's the total now?
To the customer, no, sir. We are one hundred percent deployed as far as all of our networking units, but to the customer, no.
And what's the anticipated date of completion?
I don't know that.
Uh, we are, we're, we actually just had this conversation earlier today. We're about ninety-five to ninety-seven percent complete on the, on the electric installs. Uh, the water installs, we are a little lagging behind. I believe we're somewhere closer to sixty percent. My team's going to switch over and help assist with, assist with the water installs once that starts.
For some of those, those last, those remaining ones, are these, are those ones that, like in the case of electric, that you, the, some of these very, very old electric meter bases would not accommodate AMI?
Uh, the.
Meter, meters? That's some of the problem, why it's not totally a hundred percent? Because I thought we would be a hundred percent.
No, the biggest issue was the fact that we had a hurricane.
Okay.
And that, that, that really put us behind, is that we were, we were actually, probably would have been completed by December or January.
I, I would think that the prepaid model in two, three years, and I think, again, part of the reason you're offering that free service to the other, when we get ten percent, according to your figures, the other fifteen-five we're getting free, is in looking at it and getting, getting familiar with it, they will probably possibly convert over to prepaid. Is that?
I, I, we would like to think so. We'd like to see fifty percent of the people on prepaid, but in reality, I don't think them using that system is going to cause them to go to prepaid. But what I do think it does is it, again, it benefits the utility, because you don't have people calling in and asking about the high bill complaints and my payment's posted. But I, I don't, I don't think, I don't believe that, that Usage Monitor customers go to prepaid just because of the tech, because they have the same technology anyway, right? Um, and, and probably most people in this room, you know, would, would think twice about going into prepaid, present company acceptance. And she could probably make a good reason why y'all should be on prepaid.
Right, you don't have to do a deposit.
There you go.
I mean.
So your credit don't get checked?
No, the, the reason for that is, is, is we're all about customer service, and we, for years, we didn't offer the, the non-prepaid option. And we listened to our customers, and they said, wow, this is a really nice portal, and really good mobile app and all this. Why can't we give it to all our customers? And we said, you know what? You're right. All we had to do was create a new role, login credentials, and we, we were done. So it, it worked out really well. Now, if you use My Usage Payments, you also get online bill present, or electronic bill present, EVP. Uh, but, but all of your customers have to use our payment system for that to be activated.
I would, I would think with the.
I was saying, why don't we transition over to utilizing them for payments if it's free, and it's no added cost?
Now, the payments, we, we have fees, and so we have credit card fees, just like getting a processor.
Credit card fee? No, but I'm saying it's no added cost to us.
No.
Because we already have the system, and then everybody will be on the same system.
Everybody, everybody, every utility customer would have the ability to make a credit card payment with their mobile phone or on the web, or through the IVR.
So what's the credit card fee to process a payment?
We, I have to have my director of payments run it, do an analysis. It, it depends on the number of payments and all that kind of stuff. But we're real competitive with whoever you have now.
Oh, okay.
Thank you guys. Pay near me, or, uh, no, not pay near me.
Point pay.
Point pay, point pay.
Yeah.
Uh, but that's a different discussion, but we, we, we would love to have all of your credit card business. Uh, and that, that actually leads to a discount on the six dollars a month, if we're getting all of your credit card business.
Sounds like we need.
That drives that, that drives that six dollars a month down to closer to four.
Can you get it down to three?
Well, I don't know. I'm running out of time here.
Well, let me set up.
But it, that's something, that's something to consider, you know, in the future. We, I'm just, we really appreciate your business. We look forward to working with your city. Uh, it's a beautiful town. Uh, we've already done the initial training. Um, got a great staff to work with, and, and we'll be here to help any way we can.
Thank you.
Thank you for your participation. Any other questions from the board this time?
And my apologies for running over.
No problem.
No problem. It's very important.
Thank you very much.
Our first order of business would be requests and petitions to citizens. While we're doing this, I normally would do some new business, but I would like to welcome the, it seems like we have some Boy Scouts in the group tonight. We would like to welcome you, and you are with what group?
Five eighty-four.
Did you get that?
Five eighty-four.
Five eighty-four. Uh, tonight, we have Bethany Richards, who would like to come up and, Bethany Richards would like to come up and make some comments.
Bethany Richards, four oh five Harbor Drive, four oh five. Uh, since Florence has happened, it's been eight months, I just come tonight, I, I want to inquire, maybe get answers, possibly help to resolve problems concerning trash and litter pickup. I feel like we've had enough time to kind of get a grasp on some of the litter and debris that the storm caused. There are two major concerns that I have are residential and business slash city property that is not getting taken care of when it comes to trash and debris removal. I think we all care about this town enough that we don't want to see a mess for too long of a time. And I feel like eight months has been enough time for us to kind of get a hold on things. The railroad lot that's there on North Craven Street, I'm not sure how we can get in touch with anybody to help get that cleaned up. It's horrible, and it just keeps, the trash keeps building up in that fenced-in area, and then it's getting blown out along North Craven Street. There are two volunteer organizations that take time out, people are taking time out of their own daily lives to go and clean up New Bern. And I just feel like there are some businesses and some city properties that are not getting tended to, and it's just causing more of a problem for us that are trying to take care of residential and city streets. So I'm here to kind of maybe ask how, why, is, are we able to fix it as citizens? Or, I mean, are there answers? Is there accountability for residential homes that are being neglected? There's not any mowing, the, the houses are vacant. Is there any accountability for those people? Are we giving them a time limit on getting things taken care of? And businesses, where's the accountability for them to pick up their trash? And, I mean, most of this is post-Florence debris. It's not just, you know, a Miller Lite bottle on the side of the road. It is storm debris that is still, makes our town look not, you know, we're coming into tourist season, so I'm just hoping that we can make things a little bit more picked up. So if I could have any advice, if there's anything I can do, if there's any answers for homes, businesses.
Well, let me just, again, this is a question petition to citizens, but sometimes things that are really concerning the city, you know, we don't mind stopping a moment and discussing them. And, you know, we just, the other week, we had a community cleanup, and I don't know how many dumpsters we had for that cleanup. We, we, we work and partner with communities that want to have development cleanups or particular areas of town. We do those. This is a good time of year to do that. Uh, we do have a mowing program that when folks are not taking care of the property, we, we will do that and assess them. We have mentioned in budget discussions that there, for legal purposes, there are quite a few homes in the, in the Dallas, in the New Bern area that we legally, until we go through the due process, cannot demolish that need to be demolished. But at the same time, there are homes that we are looking for some more aggressive means of not necessarily draconianly requiring maintenance to the home, but we are looking for volunteer groups. We are looking for. We are looking for, um, some direction more so from the staff to the concerns of folks like yourself. We are looking at strategic locations for placement of more, um, trash bins and recycling, um, bit, you know, around certain areas of town, which we've done and we're looking at some more of those sites. So does any, Alderman, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, just a couple, a couple of things. First of all, I have to thank Ms. Richards for her efforts. I mean, she sing- she single-handedly with a small group of people cleaned up Harbor Drive and all of that area, down that street with all the debris and everything that were in the marshes did an incredible job. And she's very concerned with the, the litter in our town. And, um, I saw and we spoke about the litter at the railroad, uh, what would be Norfolk Southern Rail Station there. And I, I wanna call on Alderman Astor because he's always had a great relationship with Norfolk Southern. And he actually called and talked to them, so I'm gonna let you tell her what they said to us. And I, I'm, I'm doing this in public because hopefully it puts some pressure on them.
Sure. Um, I've, I've had several conversations with railroad about cleaning that yard up on North Craven Street. Uh, we, we've all taken pictures, we sent them to some of the top management of the railroad, uh, got their attention very quick. They contacted me back and said they will be sending people down to clean it up. Well, about what, maybe two months went by and I contacted them again, cause it didn't appear that, that didn't a whole lot of anything, you know, accomplished over there. So I called again, they said, well, we cleaned the yard up. I said, well, if you cleaned the yard up, you didn't do a very good job. And I said, are you sure you were talking about the one in New Bern, North Carolina? So basically I, um, made, they handed it, call off to some frontline supervisors that's in this area. I made calls with them, they told me they weren't gonna do anything else to the yard, period. Said it was a working yard and they weren't gonna do anything else with it. Uh, I even tried to convince them to repair the fence, put a new fence up, put some of the slats in it to kinda hide, you know, the, the construction yard. And they said they wouldn't do that. So they're not willing to do anything. So if you want to put pressure on them, I'll be glad to give you some phone numbers.
I appreciate that.
Fine. You ready to write one down?
Sure.
Contact Mr. Rob Holloway. And by the way, I let Mr. Holloway know that this was happening tonight.
Yes, we want them, we want the, the public pressure on, cause that's the only way we're gonna get anything done.
Okay, I'm ready.
It's Rob Holloway. And his phone number is three one four nine seven three nine eight three four. And good luck.
Thank you. I mean, I'm at the point where I can even get my crew out there to clean it up. I, I would appreciate a donation towards my nonprofit, but I'd even offer, hey, we've, we've got the manpower, people to go clean it, but just make a donation so that we can at least get it taken care of. I don't wanna fight, I just want it cleaned up, it looks terrible.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Because he wasn't willing to do much to help me out.
So, and as for other city property and residential, is there like a time limit for homes that?
Well, what other city properties are you talking about? Yeah, I'm quite interested to know what city property you're talking about that needs cleaned up.
Uh, it's, I mean, just various places, um, the foot of Avenue A, um, those buildings along back there.
Well, but those are privately owned, that's the problem. They're not public, they're privately owned. So, are you talking about where the fire just took place?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's private property and I, they have cleaned up back there. I think it's been cleaned up this week, I heard.
Yeah, we were, we were out there three weeks ago, but there's, there's still buildings that, um, have a lot of debris from the storm and it's, nothing's been touched, so just curious about.
You can always call the nuisance and abatement, um, the city attorney shaking his head, yes. So you can contact Nancy Johnson, who's the nuisance and abatement officer.
Okay.
And, uh, you can turn in an address and say, there's debris here, whatever, and then they would check up and follow up on that.
And residential, is there like a year, do they have a year?
Ms. Richards, you sent me some pictures, correct? And I did, um, turn them over to the Developmental Services Office, Mr. Jeffrey Gary's office. And the process with that, if it's residential property, there's a process involved where they have to send a homeowner letter, you know, uh, giving them a brief detail of what needs to be done to the property. And then if, if the homeowner does not take care of that property in that timeframe, then the city will act on it. And then that residence, that owner will be billed. So it is a process we go through and, and believe me, I did not forget you, I turned that information over. I think I emailed you back.
You did. I, I was just wondering what the eventual outcome could possibly, I mean, we're, several of us are still living among these homes and buildings and, um, it's just not a good situation.
Cause I went over and viewed the area that you was speaking of and I, 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 believe me, I completely understand. And hopefully this will be handled ASAP.
Okay. I appreciate it, thank you all.
You're welcome.
Please call, um, you know, again, we have several different volunteer groups, be glad to work with you on that. And please give me a call or we'll talk some more and try to coordinate some things. And again, any site-specific problems you're, you're referring to, um, we'd be glad, I'll be glad to help you. I'll be glad to be able to look at them with you.
Okay.
Uh, other Aldermen, I'm sure will be glad to, but we, we really appreciate you coming up and being concerned because this is what, I mean, we wanna clean city and that's part of what we've been trying to do the last couple of years with more trash containers and things like that. Because people will, they will throw things in a trash container if there's one to throw it in. Uh, the problem is, is that haven't been some. And so again, uh, Mr. Stevens, don't you have some locations we were talking about putting some additional containers?
Um, yes, I mean, we can, we've, we constantly try to, uh, identify locations where we have, uh, heavy trash generators, if you wanna call it that, uh, which are your commercial establishments, your fast food restaurants, uh, you know, um, grocery stores with little plastic bags flying all over the place, you know, things like that. But, uh, those are certainly, uh, areas that we have identified. And I know Mr. Montane, uh, placed several of those out, um, uh, over the past couple of years, um, in some of those areas that generate a lot of, of the, uh, I guess nuisance trash, if you wanna call it that. Now, if it comes to debris-related type stuff, that if it's related to hurricane debris that people haven't cleaned up, yeah, that's a different story. Uh, and, and you're correct, I would advise, uh, Ms. Richard, Ms. Richards to contact our nuisance abatement officer, um, with specific addresses that they can identify and then they can follow up and check on those. Um, and, um, basically put people on notice that if they don't clean it up, they give them a certain amount of time. If not, they start getting fines. Um, and then the same thing with, uh, uh, the mowing of, of high lots as far as grass goes. Um, those are, that's another thing that we can also address if there's grass that needs to be mowed in certain places that's being unkept. Um, then we can address those, but we need to follow the proper protocols because we have to do that based on our ordinance and our statutes.
So again, and, and again, I really appreciate you doing this. I'm gonna give everybody a little, uh, I was talking to Mayor Vance for a couple of months ago and we were talking about litter. He walks in the morning like many New Bernians and picks litter up, which I'm, uh, there's quite a few people, uh, Newsom Williams and others. And, um, where he walks every day, just about, there's the same fast food bag and leftovers from eating the sandwich and some other stuff. And so, you know, he knows this town really well, so it's not there the night before. It's always there in the morning. So obviously it's probably happening early in the morning, somebody eating, eating breakfast. So he got a policeman to go over there and just stay, be stationary there for a couple of hours. And sure enough, this person came by and it was a person from New Bern that has a job in Vanceboro that evidently stops by, they love the fast food in New Bern and eats it on the way over there. And the last thing they do before they go to the, to the employment is they run way down, throw the trash out. And, you know, this is just not acceptable. It's not acceptable in New Bern, it's not acceptable in Vanceboro. But the reason I'm saying that is, is, is totally a, a culture problem. And, and this is probably a very professional person that thinks that that trash belongs on the sidewalk of Vanceboro instead of in the foot of the car till he, he or she can go properly discard, discard it. And so, um, you know, part of what we need to do, and Bethany, I've, again, appreciate you being here, is we've got to change that culture. Yeah, I mean, you can put all the trash cans you want out there, but until you get people to start changing, uh, uh, conditioning behavior, you know, there's, there's, there's four legs to that stool we're gonna have to work on. So we really do appreciate you coming up. And I was very disappointed here that, that Mayor was telling that story, cause it, there's plenty more of those where that one came from. So, uh, if you see anything, if you email me, I'll forward it to the manager, uh, the abatement officer and the Alderman of whichever ward what you're saying that happens to be a problem.
Okay. Thanks for your time.
Hey, thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Woods, would you come up, sir? James Woods.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Porter Alderman. My name is James O. Woods Junior. I stay at nineteen zero three Country Club Road here in New Bern. Uh, my concern is, um, I would like to see or ask, I know the city is not responsible, but if someone could talk to DOT about putting a left turn light on the eastbound side, turning on the eastbound side of Highway seventy. Um, even before the construction, there was a problem of trying to turn left at certain times of the day. Now it's almost impossible to turn left on going eastbound seventy. We have to come all, we have to come all the way through the city to get out towards Walmart. I don't know if that's in the plans, but something really needs to be done. So that, that's my concern.
Can I ask this real quick, Mr. Woods? Specifically which direction are you?
I'm, I'm going eat, I'm, I'm heading up Country Club, heading up Country Club, coming into the city. See, there's one turning on the westbound already, but there's not one on the eastbound side. And that is, and that is the only left turn light getting on seventy that does not have a left turn light.
Is that getting?
I'm turning eastbound going, I'm going eastbound going towards the mall on Country Club. I'm turning left from, um, if you're coming from Trent Woods, I'm turning left going eastbound on seventy.
That'll be westbound.
By, by Lawson Creek.
That's westbound.
No, it's eastbound. Westbound has a turn light. Westbound has a turning light.
Eastbound is going back towards Havelock.
Westbound is in.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you, I stand corrected. Westbound, okay, westbound.
Westbound.
Yes, westbound.
You were talking about there, is there a light there to turn left to go?
It's a light, it's a light to turn left to go to Havelock, but there's not a light to turn left to go to Kinston.
Okay.
And that is the only intersection on Highway seventy bypass that does not have it. And it's almost next to impossible now to turn left if you wanna go to the mall. You already gotta, gotta come through the city. And, and we know it's already filed up with the traffic and everything, but, I mean, even this evening, it was a line of cars trying to turn left. Thank you.
Yes, sir, we'll take a look at that. Uh, anything else, okay? Any other petitions to citizens? Scott, I have number eleven, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, and support. I have number eleven, it's a presentation on Kidsville two point O. As you recall, um, our Kidsville was, uh, in some disrepair, was, uh, furthermore turned, uh, torn down, um, several months ago. And, uh, our staff has been, uh, discussing fundraising efforts and volunteer opportunities to help build back the playground. We've also had a, uh, public input session, um, where we engaged, uh, children to come in and provide some input with regards to what all was going to go into, uh, this new Kidsville. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hughes, who is gonna give you a quick presentation on the Kidsville two point O project.
Good evening, Mayor Alderman, uh, this is Mr. Stevens Sted. Um, several months ago, back in March, we invited the children of our community to come to the West New Bern Recreation Center to take part in the design process for Kidsville. And so you'll see an overhead rendering of what they came up with. And, um, just to give you an idea of, of the size of this playground versus what we had at the original Kidsville, this is just a little bit larger, takes up more, more square footage than, than the original Kidsville. I'm gonna go now to the, um, it's basically the three D version of the design and just kinda give you a little tour around it. If you're, we're looking at the very bottom left, you'll see where the swings are. And this is the two to five-year-old age group where we've got a pirate ship and that is fully accessible. And it's got a variety of amenities. There is a sandlot where, with a digger in there and there's some built-in basically fossils that, that kids can expose and, and, and do their geological digging with. There's also a little treasure chest there that they can hide things in as part of the playground. There are several rockers in there. As you go to the larger area, there's a merry-go-round in there, it's the, it's the green section right, right past the entrance. Then there's, there are a few spinners in there for individuals to hang on. The big structure is the castle and there are quite a few amenities all around there, several slides. There is a little, um, basically a little, uh, almost like a speed racer. This came from, uh, a lot of participants wanting to see something out of Star Wars, the speed racer you saw in that, that, uh, in those movies. The next thing is the Lego maze. A lot of kids still play with Legos and they play with the Hot Wheels cars. And so this is designed based on what, uh, the kid's recommendation was. Then coming around there is a tag maze where kids can go out there and play tag with one another. Then we've got elevated obstacles where they can work on their upper body strength. And then we've got a zip line in there and this is an accessible zip line. So if you're in a wheelchair, you can go on it as, as well. And this is a really nice amenity. Then we've got a variety of swings as well. So where, where do we stand on, on, on fundraising? That's the, the, I don't even wanna give a number, it's a fifty million dollar question.
Castle.
So our goal is to raise three hundred thousand for this. So far, we have raised twenty thousand dollars for this project. Um, that is in addition to the hundred fifty thousand the city of New Bern put in the budget. We have reached out to over three hundred businesses thus far. We have reached out to thousands of individuals and a lot of people having a great interest in participating as right now, though, what we have in the bank is twenty thousand dollars. So we continue to go out and talk to businesses and I talk to civic clubs all the time, uh, in hopes that that number is gonna increase. Now, that twenty thousand dollars goes, well, well, basically when we sell this, it, there are a variety of things. You can buy a tile to put out there, a brick paver, a picket on a fence, or you can have your name on a big kiosk for sponsorships, or you can purchase name, naming rights for an individual amenity, whether it be a slide or the little speed racer or the Lego maze. And so we've sold quite a few of those amenities into playground itself. Those are, those are starting to go, a lot of doctor's offices are picking up on that, as well as a few restaurants have picked up on some of those. So, um, we're getting there, but we're, we're not getting there as, as quickly as I'd like it to go. Now, we're getting ready to get to the point to where, where that timeline is, whatever we raise, that's what we're gonna be able to build. So we're how, I'm actually speaking with Leathers and Associates now, um, on when that drop dead time is gonna be as to how big of a, a playground we're gonna have. So we're looking at the possibility of a phased purge. And when we do that, we're definitely gonna do the large castle. That's the biggest bang for our buck there. We'll definitely do the slide, I mean, the swings in the, in the two to five and the five to twelve age group. Everything else will depend on the amount of money we receive. And so fortunately, that's, that's the best I can give you right now based on the money we have. But definitely the largest piece we have there and the swings will be involved with it. One thing we did do is we pushed back our construction date. Um, we got a lot of, of concerns from people that are signing up with us. They, they, we're not gonna be in town. We, we were originally gonna do our build on the seventeenth, seventeenth or eighteenth of, um, June, which is when school is out. A lot of people were going on vacation. So we decided to push it back a few weeks to July fifteenth and it worked, actually worked quite well. We've had a lot of, um, groups that have volunteered to help with the design week on that. So we're gonna aim for July fifteenth and that'll give us just a little bit more time to continue to raise more funds. So volunteer opportunities, we have several. Um, we've had several people that have gone out, taken our packets and we've got packets like this and they've gone downtown. They, they, several went to the car show this past weekend and passed information out. We set up at any event or festival that we can to put our information out and so we've had volunteers do that as well. We're looking for volunteers to help with our design, uh, with our build, which will be that week of the, um, fifteenth of July. What we'll do is, we're gonna be working twelve hours a day for basically six days to get this playground built. So we need a lot of help with that. That's where we currently stand. What questions do you have for me?
Do you, um, I know that when we did Kidsville, we, we had quite a bit of in-kind from some businesses that were able to donate things and equipment. Uh, have you looked into some in-kind opportunities?
We, we, we are looking into in-kind opportunities for use of equipment with, you know, this is not gonna be a playground made out of wood. And a lot of in-kind came from wood previously. this is not gonna be a playground made out of wood, and a lot of in-kind came from wood previously. And so, that, that opportunity is out the window for us, because this is basically recycled plastic which looks like wood. So, we're having to purchase those things to be aligned with what the Leathers and Associates recommends. We're also working with restaurants to help with feeding and things like that, so.
Did you, did you have a price on the pickets for additional pickets? Do you have, is it in your information?
It is in the information. I can just.
I thought it'd be nice to let the public know right now on TV. What?
Mayor, do you remember when we did the first go-around? I, I can't remember if it was Rotary, or if it was Lions, or one of those groups actually went out and sold, they helped to sell pickets and other things. They got involved and got behind the fundraising for Kidsville. And I was just wondering if we could go to, you know, you could do a, a talk to one of the Rotary groups, or civitans, or something like that, and see if they would assist in, you know, selling pickets or to help raise more money.
Absolutely.
Well, one thing on, on the picket sales, you know, at the time the last one, Kidsville was done, I know there are families that have had children and grandchildren added to their families. I could, I could use five more myself.
Five grandchildren?
Yeah, I got five grandchildren. So, if, if a family that, you know, in my case, we bought four of them, and when you put these back up, could you buy five more and put them in line with the four? I'm asking these questions, because these are ideas that the public would wanna know, and.
How much would these pickets?
Depending on the price, I might probably buy five pickets myself, but.
That's right. Well, we're not gonna combine the wooden pickets with the, with the recycled plastic pickets. It, it won't look good, so we're, we're planning on doing with the wood pickets that people did not want to pick up, is we're gonna incorporate that into a sculpture outside of the playground. So, it'll still be there, and it'll be a nice, nice structure that people can still see their names as, as long as the wood is.
Were you able to salvage and save a hundred percent of the old pickets?
All of the pickets that were there?
Yeah.
We did salvage.
Because I just, I wondered with the twenty-five years, if some of them were just probably beyond.
And, and I'm sure over the years, some may have been taken away, some may have, you know, the, the wood, they rotted. But the ones that we have.
Some of them got gone, yeah.
What's the new picket?
Yeah, how much it cost for the new picket?
One picket is fifty dollars. Fifty dollars.
That's a little cheap.
That is cheap.
Yes, yes, it is. And you'll have your name on it. I think the, the, the name has up to twenty, up to twenty characters on there. You know, this is made out of recycled materials, so, you know, the kids, the original Kidsville, they, they saw twenty-five years of life out of that wood. With, with this material, you know, you're gonna get fifty, seventy-five, a hundred years.
The way you sell some of those pickets, as soon as you get some of them up, a lot of people will then jump on it. That's what happened the first time is, I, I was on a crew that was making them. And so, when they started, the first ones started getting put up, that's when everybody jumped on to buy them. So, if you could, I know you don't probably wanna do that till you procedurally wanna get the equipment in first, but if you had one section that wouldn't hurt the new ones to go ahead and put, start putting them up, you would, they'll sell quicker.
How, how much is the brick pavers, so everybody will know?
The brick pavers are seventy-five dollars.
Okay. And how would someone, you may have given this out, but what's the best way for someone to order one? Is there?
They can actually go onto our website at newbernc dot gov. They can click on the Parks and Recreation link, and it'll take them straight, straight to the area where they can actually purchase online. They can also download this information. They can give us a call at Parks and Recreation at six three nine two nine oh one, and we're happy to give them the information as well. They can come into the office and, and fill out a form. And a lot of people do come into the office and, and talk to us about what they'd like to have.
How many pickets do you plan on have new, and how many are they gonna be?
Look, we've got the opportunity to have quite a lot, several hundred. I think we had, I think we had over three hundred and fifty in the previous one. So, it's probably gonna be between four and five we've got the opportunity to have, four and five hundred.
Foster, just an idea, with all the nonprofits we have around the city that are so civic-minded, maybe put a package together and send to each one of those nonprofits and have a contest. Whichever nonprofit raises the most money, they'll get something in the park named after them. You know, I think that may get some engagement from some folks that may not be able to come up with enough money to actually purchase a structure themselves. But if they get engaged and go out and raise the funds, either way, we're getting the money at the end of the day, which is the key. So, just a thought.
Absolutely.
Foster, for fundraisers, I guess I need to direct this to the city attorney, because I have an idea for fundraiser, so that we, can we as a board participate in a fundraiser?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
We can? So, I think a good idea, like, maybe, you know, summer's coming. If we have, like, a dunking boot somewhere, you know, and we can all participate in, and we charge a fee for that dunk, I'm pretty sure we can raise some money.
Or a pie in the face.
Pie in the face, yes. I think that, you know, can raise an awful lot of money.
And, you know, we have a, a summer concert series, and the first one's getting ready to start off on May twenty-fourth, which is next Friday night, and.
Perfect, pie in the face, a hundred dollars.
And we're happy to get a dunking boot, and we would love to sell, sell spots for opportunities for, for our Aldermen.
You gonna be the first one?
Let me clarify something out, that was just specifically my idea, okay? So, that's on my back, okay?
I think that's a great idea.
It might be a good idea to announce that you could buy pickets and have somebody there with a table to buy pickets.
We, we will have that on the air, yes.
Good job, Foster. Thanks.
Awesome.
Thank you.
How much are, are your bricks? How much are they?
The bricks are seventy-five dollars.
Okay, any other questions about that? Let's go to item number twelve.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twelve is a presentation on stormwater. At the request of the board, the, the board wished to have an update on where we are with stormwater, stormwater-related projects and programs. There were some questions with regard to our funding through USDA and FEMA, so, and the progress that we had made over the winter with regards to some of our ditch work. So, at this time, I'll turn it over to Matt. He has provided a pretty robust presentation and update on where we are with our stormwater program and what has been completed thus far and what's upcoming.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Just wanna give you a quick little update on stormwater and where we sit with several, several areas. Just a quick rundown of what we're gonna touch base on. First, we're gonna talk about the NC Works program, give an update on that. I'll update you on the USDA-funded projects that we've been working on, also on FEMA-funded projects. Then I will give you a quick update on staff and what we've been doing to focus on ditch maintenance, as well as the one million dollars of ditch maintenance that the board has funded through our work session. And then, finally, I will update you on several miscellaneous stormwater projects that we're currently working on. The NC Works program, as you all know, it's a federally funded program where employees to the NC Works program are assigned to work for different municipalities on hurricane-related tasks. Back in October, I think Alderman Kenzie initiated it. We reached out to the NC Works program, and we made a request for thirteen, fourteen employees, five for our Public Works Department, eight for our Partial Recreation Department, and one administrative person for accounting. We've been working on that since October, and as of today, we've received two employees. Back April twenty-ninth, about two weeks ago, we received two employees. They were assigned to our Stormwater Division within Public Works. They've worked with us for about two and a half weeks, and I will say they're doing a very good job. But at this time, that's all we've received. I did get, one little update from bottom of the screen there. I did get an email today that there are two additional employees that they're finishing up the screening on this week and are projecting to assign them to New Bern on Monday. So, Monday the twentieth, we should have four employees to the NC Works program. So, that's, that's kind of where we stand with that program. Probably the best way to do this, I'll just ask if there's any questions about that program.
The key point is, it's no problem.
Yeah, as Mark indicated, the, the key is, it's, it's their employees are assigned to work in New Bern, and they pay their salaries. You know, they, they're, they're paying their salaries, they provide them with their, you know, PPE, their hard hats, their boots, and uniforms, and the only thing we gotta do is give them a job to work on. Great. No question. All right, next thing I'll move on is to our, the USDA projects, or USDA-funded projects. Back in December of two thousand and eighteen, we requested assistance to the Emergency Watershed Program. We submitted in January ten different locations or projects that we thought would fit their criteria for this program. And after doing a walkthrough with their staff, looking at the projects, in March, I received notification from the USDA folks that they have got five projects that they have deemed potentially eligible. So, what they're, what they have done is they have assigned those projects to an engineer out of Kinston. That Kinston has come to New Bern, he'll do a project scope, he'll do project estimates, and design for the project to be completed. That engineer actually had his initial meeting on May thirteenth, which was yesterday. He came down, we walked through all five of the locations, talked to them in detail, and he will be sending his team of surveyors and engineers down here next week to do some detailed surveying and project analysis for each one of those five locations. So, what projects were met the criteria? The first one that met the criteria was cleanup of Renning's Creek Outfall Ditch, which is off of Oaks Road. If you've driven that, you know there are probably a mile worth of trees down all throughout the creek. The Trent Road, Red Robin Outfall, basically the bank stabilization and the reconstruction of that bank right there, I like to say, right there at the intersection of Red Robin Road and Trent Road, the new pipe that DOT put underneath Trent Road. The third one is the cleanup of the Wilson Creek Outfall, which is basically runs from Red Robin Road across Chelsea, right where that pipe crosses underneath Trent Road from that location all the way out to Wilson's Creek. And the third one, which is a little bit of change, what you see on your handout, is the cleanup of the North Hills Canal. Over behind the houses in North Hills are several very large trees that have fallen down into the canal and need to be cleaned out. That project was found to meet the requirements as well. And then the fourth one was the downfall for Wilson's Creek located in the King's Row area. That's basically everything that runs from Greenbrier to King's Row, and that runs out to Wilson Creek. That was deemed eligible as well. That being said, we have five projects that they initially deemed ineligible, and that was the cleanup of the Outfall Park at Glimmerie Park, the bulkhead replacement in Tryon, Trent Village. And then there is a bulkhead stabilization in Water Street, and an outfall pipe replacement over on East Rose Street, and then the cleanup of the Duffy Field Canal. With that being said, we did actually review these projects with the engineer when he came here yesterday. We talked about the five projects that were deemed ineligible by the initial review. The main two that we talked about were two bulkhead stabilizations on Water Street and over on Trent Park, Trent Village, for Richmond Court. And I have been asked to resubmit them. We went and looked at those yesterday, even though they were deemed ineligible, and the engineer thought that they should have been deemed eligible. So, we're gonna go back and revisit those when they're back in town next week. So, hopefully, the five that have been eligible will become, might be seven by the time we get done next week.
So, what happens with the ones that they do not fund? Is that something we're gonna take care of ourselves?
Those are the ones that'll fall basically under our staff will have to do, or they may fall under the main knowledge of ditch projects that we've got done. And we've also got several projects that we've submitted through FEMA as well. All right, talk about the FEMA projects, if you will. We had several projects that we actually saw, stormwater-related projects as a result of Hurricane Florence. The first one was over in the Sunnyside Community. We had a collapsed storm drain pipe across Neuse Avenue. That one has been repaired. We had a collapsed storm drain over on Trent Road. That one has been repaired. We had another collapsed storm drain on Tram Road in Old Town, and that one has been repaired as well. Also, the final thing that's been repaired is the repairs of the Jacksmith Creek Wetlands. With the rising of the tide, the overflow berm is at an elevation five and a half. And of course, we all know the river was up to about a ten, so we, we had significant damages there at the overflow berm and washed out. We had some washout behind the wall. We've had a contractor come in. Every bit of that's been repaired as well. So, we got one other project listed here, and that is the eighty miles of ditch clearing. We have submitted that to FEMA for a project to be considered, and that would be for the cleaning and maintenance of all eighty miles of the ditch work that's fall within the city. We met with the FEMA representatives. They came down and basically said, hey, look, if we're gonna do this, we need to walk twenty percent of the ditches. So, we got out there with staff, myself, and Avery, and several of the FEMA guys and our FEMA consultants, and we walked sixteen and a half miles of drainage ditches throughout the city, took pictures, took measurements, and basically, they have submitted that report into FEMA, actually earlier this month as a project. So, hopefully, we'll hear some good news about that in the near future. As a follow-up to that, we've also are working with our consultants to submit several projects for mitigation through FEMA. One of them is the bulkhead, bulkhead and the pipe replacement over at the East Rose Pump Station. Over at the Biddle Street Pump Station, we are looking to increase the downfall underneath the railroad tracks and also potentially put a generator out at that location. There are several retaining walls we're submitting through FEMA. Again, Trent Village and also Water Street are also on this list. If they don't get funded through USDA, we hope they get funded through this program as well. And then there's also a project over at Red Robin, where we're looking to do a bulkhead along the edge of, kind of extend the one that goes underneath Trent Road. I like to say Maggie Cusland's property, that ditch bank kind of erodes all the way to her driveway. So, we're looking at some options of what we can do there for mitigation. And then we've got a couple larger projects. The easiest one to talk about is the covert that runs underneath Yarmouth Road. If you're not aware, that washed out during Hurricane Irene, and it washed out again during Hurricane Florence. So, we're looking at a mitigation project to enlarge that crossing. And then, two large projects that we're, we're considering and we're talking about are the ones that Mark has briefed, briefed you on in the past, and that's North Hills and East Rose Pump Stations. Trying to install some type of floodgates where we could use the railroad tracks or Semin Street kind of as a dam to keep the water from flooding back into those neighborhoods. So, that's, that's a quick review of the projects we've submitted through FEMA.
Excuse me, Matt, I just wanna ask you a question. On your retaining wall, the Water Street, now, is that the street you're speaking of over, like, over Oples in that area?
That is correct. It's actually right behind the hospital. I'm sure the mayor can tell us. I, I don't remember her name, the lady that lives at that.
Ms. Bryant?
Ms. Bryant's house, that's correct. Back at the back of her property, there's a, kind of an old block retaining wall that kind of ran down the side of the ditch. It's completely washed out. Now, it's washing out on both sides, and the pipe that runs from there to the street has actually got several sinkholes as a result of Hurricane Florence. So, we've submitted that project there as well.
Okay, well, what, what I wanted to point on was that, right there on Hazel Avenue, where the canal runs under Hazel Avenue.
Yes, ma'am.
You have two residents there where you have that same problem, where the soil is washing away at the property line of those homeowners. And I had mentioned that when we went out on the tour that we had of Duffy Field, that, with the USDA, that, that was an area that needed some attention. I mean, are you familiar with the area I'm speaking of?
I know exactly, I know exactly where you're talking about. I did not get, I, I know you went on the tour with David and Avery and several other guys, and I, I think I was out of town at that point. But I, I can certainly get over there and take a look at that right away and see what may or may not need to be done in that location.
I'm speaking of the area right there on Hazel Avenue, where you turn off, you turn off of Semin Street onto Hazel, and the street that takes you on down to, Hazel takes you on down to the Oaks Road School. Right there, Hazel Avenue, that canal runs underneath that.
It's where Hazel and Hazel intersect.
Right, exactly. And I think, I think it's the property of the Morgans, Leander Morgan and Mr. Samuel Bundy. And those property lines are, the soil is really being washed away on their property. So, if that can be, take, if you can take a look at that and include that on that retaining wall, I really would appreciate it, and I know those homeowners would appreciate it as well.
I'll certainly take a look at it as far as submitting to the USDA. I'm not sure, a little bit late for that, but we'll, we'll certainly, when they're down here next week, we'll, we'll see what we can find out.
Yeah, even under the FEMA, FEMA project, or if this is something that we as a city has to take the, the burden of, because it should have been included with this Water Street as well, because that canal runs on, on past Water Street on down to Hazel. So, thank you.
Just a little quick little update on some of the stormwater products we're currently working on. If you all recall, there was one point five million dollars funded as part of the FY nineteen budget. I updated you at the work session that we had done nine hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars worth of work currently, and had about five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars remaining. After the work session, we were told to go forward with several projects that we had on the books. So, we've began, started beginning doing that, as you can see on the next slide. Projects on North First Avenue, Goldsboro Street, Tatum Drive, Harvard Way, Union Point Park. We have bid all those projects out. We've got a quote for those. We've got contractors lined up to go. We're, we're kind of at the mercy of the contractor right now. Everybody's busy. But we, we do have contractors lined up, and I will tell you, Alderman Best, North First Avenue is the first one that will be completed. But those are ready to go. We also have several other projects that are already out to bid or receiving quotes on, including Elizabeth Avenue, Roanoke Avenue, and Lower Lane. And then we have several. And then we have several that we're still looking at investigating, you know, Bryce's Crossing, I think everybody knows about that project. We've got some serious stormwater problems on Metcalf Street on the 200 block, which is going to need some immediate attention. And then, of course, we've got two stormwater pump stations in the Greenbrier neighborhood that we're looking to upgrade as well.
Matt, for Lower Lane, that's over by the Knights of Columbus, right? That's mine?
Right across from the West New Bern Rec Center, correct.
Oh, okay. So that's your ward.
Matt, question on, what is the plan and thought for Union Point Drainage?
Basically, what you've got in Union Point Park is you've got four-inch yard drains that were installed at some point. We've actually surveyed it, we shot some elevations, and basically the plan, we won't do it before the summer concert's over, is to actually go there and connect it, you know, properly and put some larger pipes in there. Now, that's not going to change the things when you get the high tide and the river backs up, but at least when the tide's out and rain's gone, at least it'll be able to drain.
Do you know how often that occurs?
Every time it rains. And the reason is what you've got is you've got four-inch little yard drains and a couple leaves block it up and then done.
But you also have issues, and it's not just, it's not just hurricane-related storm drainage issues. So when NC DOT built Broad Street, or actually, I guess it was, that's East Front Street, any kind of major rain event that we have, you've probably seen it pond up really bad right there in front of the convention center, all of that whole intersection right there. Well, essentially, there's two catch basins that are, for all intents and purposes, right across the street sort of from the bathrooms, that are almost kind of just a little bit closer towards the intersection. There is no discharge point per se into Union Point Park, so essentially it uses the water level elevation of the catch basins and then drains and, you know, discharges on the grass. There's no pipe network that takes it through. So obviously, that creates issues with that entire intersection and safety issues because it ponds up really bad. So part of that project will actually make that connection to that basin and carry it through the park and tie it to the existing storm drains that are there and also replace and repair, or actually replace, the little four-inch drains that you have. So if you were looking at Union Point Park, then you drive straight in rather than making the right, it always ponds really bad there. We've had issues at Mumfest, we've had issues at, I remember, we had the back truck over there backing out the water because it was.
MS Bike.
MS Bike tour, because they had a small rain event that came up and they couldn't get rid of the water. So all of that is a little four-inch yard drains, and so all of that's going to be repaired. And then the other thing is, is the discharge point where the river is has this very old, I guess hardened rubber clamp on the end of it, which effectively is supposed to work to where it opens whenever the pressure of the water is on the land side, and then it closes whenever you, so you don't get water back into the system. But I question whether, how actually effective those things are, and quite frankly, it's been under the water for so long, I think it's hardened and almost become useless at this point. But I'm sure that will probably be addressed as well.
I appreciate that explanation. I just, no knock on Foster and the park, I didn't want the homeowners and citizens to look up there and see that we're spending money on Union Point Park when it always floods. But there's other safety-related incidents that are in conjunction with that with the intersection and roadway, so thank you.
I think Mark pointed out, that's probably the biggest part is that intersection, that there is no outfall, and that will be the, kind of the beginning point for the project. All right, real quick, I'll talk about the million-dollar product that the board funded for at the work session. Basically, they took that million dollars from the street resurfacing contract that was in this year's budget and reallocated towards stormwater. So the first thing we did is we reached out to a couple different contractors to get some preliminary pricing. We selected kind of ditches that we thought would be in three different categories. The first type were kind of roadside ditches that were very easy accessible, no clearing required to get to the ditches. The second ones were ones that were kind of off the road but yet still easily accessible and maybe had some minor clearing along the way. And then the third ones were heavily wooded ones that required quite a bit of clearing. In doing that, we received quotes from two different contractors, and pretty much, they were pretty uniform as far as the Type One ditches were ten to fifteen dollars per linear foot, Type Two ditches were twenty to thirty dollars per linear foot, and the heavier wooded ditches were forty to fifty dollars per linear foot. So what I did is I took that average cost of about thirty dollars per linear foot and divided it into a million dollars and said, okay, now we can do about six point two-five miles worth of ditch work with that million dollars. So now we are working with staff now to identify the six and a half, six and a quarter miles that we're going to do. One of the main things we have to do is keep in mind that a lot of these streams are blue line, and they have a lot of requirements of things you can and can't do with the vegetative buffer along those blue line streams and digging them out. So we're working with FEMA and KAMA and everybody else to make sure what we do is allowable. So we're working now to put that list together. We hope to get it bid out. The biggest part, you know, working with JR to make sure we bid this out properly. That way, if FEMA comes back and says, hey, we're going to fund eighty miles of ditch clearing, the first thing we can do is reimburse ourselves the million dollars we've already spent. So it's very important that we make sure we do the proper procurement for this contract as well. So hoping the next, you know, forty-five days or so to kind of get that out to bid to get that work started.
Ms. Montane, another question. Just wanted, so that my constituents will know, that blue line streams, that's basically considered the canal, correct?
That is correct. The Duffy Field Canal, the North Hills Canal, they're all, they're blue line streams. I've got a map. We actually have one on the website. It shows you the blue line streams.
Right.
And actually, to be perfectly honest with you, there's a lot of them.
Yes, okay. I just want, thank you very much for explaining that.
Matt, has this been submitted to FEMA yet for these ditches?
To my understanding, it was going to be submitted last week, so the answer is yes. Unless they did not hit submit, it's been submitted.
Well, hopefully by the time you go out on bids for getting results back, maybe we'll have heard something from FEMA and we won't have to try to get a reimbursement. In fact, Mr. Stevens, that might be a good one for, to get some, one of our legislators to do an inquiry on, because that's an important one, especially with hurricane season approaching. Eighty miles of ditches, you're talking a long time.
Sure. All right. And the final area of focus is our Stormwater Maintenance Division. Just want to give you a quick update. I think Mark's updated you in the past about it, but where we are with our stormwater maintenance currently, we have seven individuals within that department, and that includes, you know, one or three inmates that are working with our staff currently. As if you recall, several months ago, probably back at the work session time, I reallocated several staff members from other departments or other divisions within the Public Works Department to work in the stormwater division. We took two off our asphalt crew, we took two off our concrete crew, we reallocated one from our leaf and limb division, we took our litter officer and the three inmates that worked with him and the two NC Works Program employees, and we've allocated all of them to work with stormwater. So now that leaves us, puts us up to about eighteen employees over working on stormwater. You know, on a daily basis, probably fourteen or fifteen, every now and then we got one or two that got to go back and help the concrete crew or help the asphalt crew, or we'll get a litter abatement or something we've got to go address. So we've kind of taken that number of seven people in the stormwater division, we've probably doubled that on a daily basis for what they're doing, maintaining ditches throughout the city. And, you know, really, of the fourteen people, you've got Stormwater Superintendent, he kind of spends a lot of his days, you know, investigating stormwater-related issues, managing stormwater projects and staff. We do have one equipment operator that is still doing minor repairs throughout the city and also continuing to do the trapping program that we do. And then we take the other twelve to fourteen employees and they're all maintaining ditches. And I've got just a couple slides that I will share with you of some of the work they've done. I think this is one over in Colony Drive over on Mackenzie's Ward, before and after photos. This is one over on Coriander Drive that we've done. This is that same ditch, this is the outfall, and that is the ditch leading up to it. They're basically, you know, I've instructed them, hey, guys, we're not just going in there and clearing the flow line, we're clearing the entire ditch, we're clearing the top of the banks and the side slopes. So they're spending a lot more time focusing on the ditches and making sure they do every part of it. This is the one that falls, I think it comes out at the New Car Wash, just before it crosses underneath Seventeen from Monterey Circle. And this one is, I think, by Pine Tree Drive. So that's where we are, kind of under six areas of focus for stormwater. I can answer any additional questions you may have.
I have a question. Can you explain to, I know, but can you explain what the purpose of the floodgate? And floodgate is almost, the floodgate lies over at, on East Rose Street, right there, underneath the railroad tracks? Is that the example for the floodgate would be installed over in the North Hills Drive area?
That's an example of a floodgate that basically allows water to go out, but does not allow water to come in when the tide rises. Not to say we put that exact type of floodgate in, but something that would accomplish that same idea.
Okay. Well, I just want to thank you. I really do want to thank you very much for the hard work that you and your staff has really been putting in, and especially with the Jack Creek Smith and the Oaks Road, I can't think of the name of it, the Rennies Creek, because that area was, the city period, certain areas experienced a lot of hurricane debris and problems and downed trees and whatever, but that area was really bad, and I really do appreciate all the hard work that you have concentrated on trying to get that area back looking right and getting that area cleaned up. So I really appreciate it and all the hard work that I see you got ahead of you and your staff.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, ma'am.
I number thirteen, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Board. In the night of presentations, next up is Chief Boyd, and he's going to give us a presentation on New Bern's fire rating from the North Carolina Department of Insurance. As you have already been made aware of, the New Bern Fire Rescue Department was recently awarded a Class Two rating through the North Carolina Department of Insurance effective June first, two thousand nineteen. So that's coming up here very soon, and Chief Boyd's going to share with you a PowerPoint presentation to review this process and the criteria for rating and what we did well, and we were going to continue to try to improve on.
Hey, Board, again, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. And I just want to, first off, I'll say to how proud I am of the personnel and our day of work and how it's an honor for me to be called the Fire Chief of this great fire department, and I truly mean that. So as you know, the community received a Class Two rating as the manager state is starting in June first, and that puts us at the bottom two percent, not only in the state but the nation. But it wasn't just the fire department. I want to do a shout out to Jordan Hughes and his group. They were a big part of it, and you'll see what I mean later in the presentation. I also shout out Chief Summers and his crew, because it was a teamwork, it was a team effort for us to putting this together. Since our last inspection, we have worked on efforts to provide a better service to our communities, efforts such as developing a strategic plan, peer review of operations, community surveys, increased training, implemented emergency dispatch, community risk reduction programs, pre-plans of commercial properties, hydrant maintenance, service testing of our hoes and apparatus, equipment purchases, improved our NFPA seventeen-ten and twelve-twenty-one baseline standards, and of course, our community partnership. The primary responsibility for the North Carolina Department of Insurance rate, response rating, is the inspection of all fire departments. The criteria dictates a minimum level of fire protection and qualifies homeowners and commercial properties to be eligible to receive reduced insurance premium rates. A clarification on that, I mean, a lot of folks ask this question, is, that's mainly for commercial properties, but if it's anything better than a five. So once you become a Class Five or better, it does affect residential, but it really affects our commercial properties. Fire rating also determines how well our department can protect and serve the community. Our service rating is a score of one to ten that indicates how well protected the community is by the fire department. Of course, the lower the number, the better, one being the best, ten meaning you're not really covered, you don't meet the minimum requirements of ISO. Criteria for rating score, number one, they look at our emergency communications. That includes emergency reporting, the number of telecommunications we have for our system, and our dispatch. Fire department includes equipment, staffing, training, geographic, distribution of fire companies, operational considerations, and community risk reduction. Water supply. Water supply include inspection and flow testing of hydrants, alternative water supply operations, and careful evaluation of the amount of available water compared with the amount needed to suppress fires up to thirty-five-hundred gallon per minute. That's pretty good-sized properties. And then, community risk reduction, it's community efforts to reduce the risk of fire including fire prevention codes and enforcement, public fire education, and fire investigation programs. Some of the waiting factors, fifty percent of it, of course, were fire department, another forty percent was graded on the water supply, ten percent went to the quality of our areas' emergency communication center or nine-one-one center. And then this year, they just started a couple of years ago, as far as the rating, you can actually score another five and a half extra points from the community outreach. So we've put a lot of effort into this and included our fire prevention and safety courses. And of course, any area outside of the five miles of the nearest fire station is automatically rated as a ten, which means there are many requirements. We have one area that's outside of the five miles right now that we contract with. That's why I chose to put the maps there to kind of show you where we are. Right now, if you look at the progress reaches of our, this is our headquarters in Elizabeth Avenue Response Districts, if you look to the north at the top, we're about right at five miles from Elizabeth Fire Station to the edge of our property. That's out there where the quarries is. Over in Bridget, we currently have it under contract with Tri-City Fire Department, but that's outside of the five miles. And then out towards Craveron Forest, out on Highway Seventeen South, it's, we're about four point nine miles from Elizabeth Fire Station, three point nine miles from Rehams, and another three point six miles from West New Bern. So basically, if that area is developed, we're going to have to make some decisions at that point in time. Five-mile district also affects our Thurman Road Fire Station. It's blue water rising that I'm showing here. Right now, that's four point two miles from Thurman Road Fire Station, and we're over five miles from the nearest offshore fire station. So as that area grows, there will be other decisions that we'll have to make in the future if we want to stay inside that five-mile district. Overall scores, if you look at the bottom, we scored an eighty-two point twenty-four overall. I want to bring your attention to the community risk reduction. We actually scored four and a half points out of five and a half points, and that's kudos to the guys who are doing their fire education programs. And if you were to take that away from it, if we had not been allowed to have that opportunity, we still would have been a Class Three, instead of becoming a Class Two. Because it changes at eighty, seventy-nine to eighties when you change from one class to the other. It's on a ten-point scale. Areas where we excel, of course, training. I put our guys up against anybody, we train day after day. We average two to three hours a day of drills, and we average at least once a month training with our outside mutual aid fire departments. Our community risk programs, again, regardless, four and a half out of five and a half bonus points. Our hydrant maintenance, top-notch, we do, we check every hydrant, we flow every hydrant, we spend every hydrant every year. Hiring a new fire spitter didn't happen last year. We were finally getting called up, that helped us with our grade. Pre-plans of commercial properties, service testing of our hoes and apparatus, we've done a great job of that and earned a lot of points. Again, adopting the NFPA twelve-twenty-one and seventeen-ten benchmarks and standards and develop a plan to attain a benchmark, that's helped us a lot. Just to give you an explanation, twelve-twenty-one has to deal with our communications and the seventeen-ten is our response times. And lastly, our thing, again, with our community partnership is another reason we excel. Areas for improvement, we're still lacking in our deployment analysis. We scored about fifty percent of the score now in our distribution of number of fire stations and our personnel, number of firefighters we have available in any given scene. We were about sixty percent of the score. Our communication, again, we were about fifty percent on that, on that particular one for our personnel, number of telecommunications we have available to address the volume of nine-one-one calls, and we continue to make, we need to continue to make efforts toward meeting the NFPA twelve-twenty-one call handling times. If y'all remember from previous presentations, it's all about different breakdown, how long it takes. it takes to handle a call, how long it takes us to get out of the fire station, the time it takes us to get from the fire station to the call, and then do affect the firefight, and it's all broken out. So twelve-twenty-one deals with that call handling times. And last, water supply, we've always continued to do, work on hydrant distribution, we just recently identified our area in Autumn Best area on Jarvis, we planted another hydrant, so we're continuing looking at anything that's above more than a thousand feet from a closed structure, do that. And I want to give kudos, George's not here tonight, but I want to give kudos to Jordan too, because he continues to develop loops in our system. And, for example, the forty-three connector, one of the things that will, that'll allow us to do is, we'll be able to allow to connect water lines from Highway seventeen over to seventy over to fifty-five, because it's, anytime you have a structure fire, it's all about loops and keeping the amount of water you need, because if we have a truck hooked up to one hydrant, and two blocks down the street, another truck to another hydrant, they're kind of robbing each other if it's not looped, and that's why I do point at that. With that said, questions? Very proud of everything they did.
Board have questions?
I can't, I can't begin to tell you how proud I am of you and the department for reducing our rating to a Class Two department. It's outstanding, I think I was reading, was it like sixteen departments in the state or something like that, out of, is there still somewhere around eighteen, nineteen-hundred?
Fourteen-hundred and something like that.
Okay, fourteen-hundred, fourteen-hundred departments, and we are within sixteen, only sixteen offer, or have the Class Two rating. And I'm not going to elaborate on this, because the board can see all this, but I can see where, where we had issues, obviously, with the deployment analysis, only received half the points that we could have received five out of ten.
Yes, sir, five point two, I think it was.
Yeah, and then, the same thing for company personnel, where we only received ten out of fifteen, so I think everybody on this board understands that there's a need there, and hopefully, we'll be working on that real soon. Great job, though.
Chief, I appreciate your comment, but now that you're in there, we were able to get that lower to a two versus your previous. I'm sorry, had to lighten the mood a little bit. I do have a question. I know that it's different for residential and commercial with the insurance savings that come along with that, and you mentioned it early on in your presentation, that it was more, or pretty beneficial for the commercials aspect. Is there some data maybe that you could share with us? And what I'm getting at is, that when we're out recruiting, you know, new commercial businesses to New Bern, we need to be touting the fact that we're better. Do you know what the county is by chance, like the industrial park, what their rating is?
Their's going to be a five, I think.
So, I'm not, I'm not trying to create, I am, I'm trying to create competition between the city and the county in this instance, but from a C-one-A standpoint, and Mr. Rugiari's office, when they're out trying to recruit businesses here, we need to tout the fact that if a business locates in the city of New Bern, there's a savings to them on their insurance, because oftentimes, people say, well, why wouldn't I just go to industrial park and not pay city taxes? Well, we need to be telling the story on why we can offset that difference, and I would like to see that information, if you could get it for us by chance.
I actually researched and tried to get, and there is no clear answer, every, I've actually went to different agencies, and I'd get different answers from each one of them. So I've actually asked DOI of state if they could provide me some, some data to be able to, I mean, I think it's a great idea, I mean, if you're, if you're taunting, or saying, saying that, hey, we got this, we're a Class Two, we're pushing this out to the public that we're a Class Two, we should have some data to be able to say, you know, it was savings out there.
Thank you.
I'm going to piggyback off what Alderman just expressed, because out on the west end of New Bern, in my ward, I mean, if I was a business coming to New Bern, and I know what the time factor was for a fire, for a fire engine to get to my location, I would be a little bit reluctant, because that's one of the reasons why I think there's a dire need, and I know it's coming down the line for a fire department on that end. So, I mean, that would be a tremendous benefit if, if the public could know about the insurance ratings, and what kind of a savings they, you know, would receive. So are you telling me now I'm going to get a reduction on my homeowner's insurance now?
Not necessarily. Well, it has worked in the past, because I know, I worked with a business, and I'm not going to call the names, just outside, that was just outside the city limits, and we, they had a, I think at the time, a Class Seven, and we had just moved to a Class Three, and they annexed, they, the insurance premiums was, outweighed the price of the taxes, and plus the other benefits that the city can offer them, so it certainly is, I mean, you take someone like Bosch, and some of these, and, you know, other places, these large hatters yachts like that, I mean, it's going to save them a lot of money on their premiums, or it can save them a lot of money on their premiums.
And I know time matters, and I just want to say that one thing, that I want to make sure that the board understands from, from my perspective, as a department's perspective, the score is important, and we're very proud of that, but I think what's more important is the effort and the things that we've done to get there, to improve the quality of customer service that we are providing our community. But that, to me, is what makes me proud, because I know that we're, every time we do these things, it's providing a better quality of service to our community.
Chief, you have something?
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank you again for the SIO ratings, and at that time, it was discussing the numbers and the rate that we was trying to get, we was looking at building the fire department at that time. It seemed like we have done very well without that apartment, but we still, I think, that the future that it is coming to, to happen, to build that fire department. So I'm really impressed with the way that you've worked diligently to get that rating.
It's not easy, sir, it's a team.
And that's great, and thank you for the team's work.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just, I want to thank you too, Chief Boyd, but I want to thank my colleagues sitting here, you know, for our commitment to understanding the necessity of the safety factor in our town. I think we, as a board, are all committed, this is a quality of life issue for our citizens, for our businesses, and I think we realize that. Thank you for your leadership, and for us just standing behind you. I know you need resources, and in order to get these ratings, you needed the resources, such as an additional fire inspector and the other things that you needed, so I continue to stand committed to you and your program, and what we can do to continue to make it work like it is.
This will be your last rating, right? I'll let, you know, talking about the ratings, you know, I was just sitting here thinking, with my career in the department, and now Chief Boyd's career as chief in the department, we've gone in about thirty years from a six to a two, and I think that's only through probably four ratings, something...
Four or five, yes, sir.
Four or five ratings, we've gone from a six to a two, so I'm not sure if we won a one. There's nowhere to go but up after that. Thank you, you've done, your department's done a great job, thank you.
It's time we should go to, I have number fourteen, excuse me, number fifteen.
Fourteen.
Oh, okay, it was fourteen, I'm sorry.
Number fourteen, presentation by Chief Boyd, again, on the fire department's five-year capital plan, this is a follow-up from our discussion during the budget workshop that we had. The board had asked Chief Boyd to provide some detailed update on the fire department's five-year capital plan in regards, I think, some of our detailed discussion with regards to our, our engine needs, and potential fire station needs over the next several years, so he's prepared some documents for you tonight, share with you, and he's going to discuss those at this time.
As you know, I was directed during the last meeting to kind of look at some options of possible purchase of a fire apparatus, well, during that, I felt like it was, we, I should say, we felt like it was probably pertinent for us to bring to you our capital plan, so you could see the big picture of not just one apparatus, but where we're trying to be in five years, or where we need to be in five years. That's a lot of information, so I'm going to briefly go through, if there's any questions that you might have, I'd be glad to stop, but the first page is just basically a summary. As you can see, there's eight, you know, pieces of equipment that need to be purchased over the next five years, that total up somewhere around four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Vehicles, we've got one, two, three, four pumpers, three for sure need to be replaced, and the fourth one is contingent on whether or not we build the fire station within the five-year plan. We're looking at another, almost three million dollars there. And then, of course, the fire station project, which is, you know, the need, been there and understand, we had to make sacrifices and continue on, but hopefully, it will eventually get this into a tactical plan. And with that being said, you know, we actually met with Warehouser last week, and property is looking pretty good for us out there on that part. And the next three pages are just justification and description of the different things from the wildland fire equipment, and you think, why does a municipality need a wildland fire equipment? Well, a lot of our developments are more and more are being built into wildland urban interface, and whenever you do that, you have to bring in the forest service. Well, forest service, if you bring them in, you're talking about a two to three aisle window, and that's if everything's good, so we, and we can't get apparatus to a lot of these places, so this will allow us to have a skid unit to be able, and hopefully, stop the fire before they get to the homes. Any questions about the description justification, anybody wanted me to dig any deeper on that?
Yeah, let me ask you about, I think some of the directions that actually Alderman Odoman was asking is, to see if there was any discount.
That's towards the end of it, we'll just do that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, just as you could see, the big picture, we also took the time to look at what the cost of the fire station would be over a five-year period. First year, of course, whenever we start doing this, if we, when you allow, if you allow, when, whatever, the first year would not cost us anything, because there'd be a land acquisition, and like I say, we were working with Warehouser and that, and it looks like that's going to work out for us. The architectural fees, of course, right on down to the purchase of things, and it comes out to be about a little over two billion dollars over a five-year period. Impact, which is the big thing, the thing that reoccurs, if you look at that, I've broken it down to what salaries, material supplies, utilities, uniforms, annual NFPA required physicals. Now, I did add the PPE in there, personal protective equipment, but that's not every five year, but it's still an impact, and it's going to be an impact that first year, and then every three to five years after that, it's also impact. JR, put in here for us a, an apparatus cost and depreciation of our whole fleet, so you can kind of see where we are, I don't know if JR want to kind of go a little bit deeper with that or not?
Yeah, this is just basically a depreciated value, just gives the board an idea of the remaining value of those assets. This is not necessarily what we could sell them for if we go on the open market to try to do that, but it just gives you an idea what the current value is on our books.
And finally, the page that Alderman asked me referring to is the prepaid discount annual increase in resale value of the apparatus. If you'll see, our engine that we bought in two thousand and two is doubled in price, well, almost doubled in price since its purchase. Prepaid discount for that one, they're offering two point three percent, which is about twelve thousand dollars. It do has some other options, which I can be glad to share with you, but that's, that's if we paid the full amount upfront. Estimated annual cost increase is somewhere about five percent a year. Then you have the NFPA required updated estimated cost increase, somewhere between five and eight percent a year, and that could, last one occurred in two thousand and fifteen, so we're anticipating in two thousand and twenty, that will occur again, so we should have, there'll be another five to eight percent increase. When I looked into the resale value of this apparatus, very difficult, I reached out to several vendors, and unfortunately, most of the people that buy older fire apparatus, like we talked about here, when we volunteer departments, that are looking to try to get something that's suitable, unfortunately, we have five, because we have such a great hydrant system, we were able to do five hundred gallon tanks. Well, volunteer departments typically don't have that luxury of having a hydrant every thousand feet or every four hundred feet, like we do, so they have to have five hundred, I mean, a thousand or seven fifty gallon tanks within our trucks, so the market for them would be very limited, and then very few municipalities buy an apparatus that's over two to three years old. So he gave me a ballpark, so we're looking at around thirty-five thousand dollars for the engine, and that's, you know, if we're happy to find the right buyer. The tower, again, it just about has doubled in price since its purchase, it's getting ready to be twenty years old. Two and a half percent discount prepaid, and again, that's if we paid a full amount upfront. Estimated annual increase, and that's another five percent, and then, of course, like discussed on the pumper, you have a five to eight percent increase every five years on that, through the NFPA, and they're thinking somewhere around forty-five thousand dollars, what that piece of apparatus. And he explained it to me on the tower, with the age and everything, that if somebody was to look to purchase that, it would be parting it out, it would be looking at selling the lights off of it, selling the turntables, selling different things off that people might need to work on their own trucks. And that's what I have, any questions?
Board have questions?
Yes, sir.
Chief question for you. Since we had this, this discussion in our last meeting, knowing this was coming for, had a unique situation happen to me, I was actually headed out of town to Wilmington a couple of weeks ago, it may have been last week, and I was at the stoplight where the Bojangles is on Highway seventeen, fire truck was coming through, went through, I said, I'm interested to see where it goes, so it went to Ben Quinn School, pulled in, there was an officer there with their lights going, truck pulled in, it was obviously a medical call, pulled in, had four staff members on the truck, one got out, I guess, with a med kit or something. And then, when I made the loop and I was headed out, here comes the ambulance. So, we obviously beat the ambulance there, which I think happens quite often. My, my question for you, when we talk about wear and tear on a vehicle, is there, is there any value, or is there not any value, to having a, a quick response vehicle, to where when you get a medical call and you know that's what you're going for, instead of driving a big truck to a site like that with four staff members that one or two could get on a pickup truck and go respond?
They're pros and cons. It's not going to help us for this capital plan, because then these apparatus are need to be replaced, but if you look at the long-term, wear and tear on apparatus, we have looked at doing, they call them flying squads, quick response teams. In some areas of the town, they'll work great, because what's happening with the EMS side of things, the medical side of things is, now, used to, it was one, then it was two, and now they're saying you need a minimum of four, because the only thing we respond to is going to be anything that's delta or echo, which is going to be, you're dying, you know, somebody needs help now. We don't go through the stump toe calls, we don't go through the IBC, we don't go through one, the typical everyday cause, only ones that we can make a difference on. And they are moving to where, because if you've ever done CPR for any length of time, the quality of compression quickly goes away if you don't constantly rotate out your personnel. So now, they've gone from a team of two to say, a team of four, because not only that, you've got, you've got somebody doing documentation, that's why I said, certain parts of town, there are certain parts of town we go to, yeah, EMS is right there, and yes, there is probably some redundancy of personnel, but there's a lot of times we go to sites and it might be, for example, if we go to Thurman Road area, it might be ten minutes before medical gets there, so, so that's the problem. But we have been doing, I have been looking at doing some analytical thoughts, especially now that I only have two people out to Thurman right now, it's a good time to experiment, so we're trying to look at that, and our staff is trying to see if, would that work in this particular area of town, where it might not work in another part of town, so we are looking into it and trying to figure out what's going to be the best way of moving forward with that.
I think it's, it's hard, it's hard to dispute when you look at the age of our vehicles, you know, not only the aesthetic aspect of it, but, you know, you can look at the hours and usage rates. I'm willing to make the decision tonight to buy one of these pieces of equipment, but I would also like to see us explore that option, because it's, it's challenging for us to go out and justify to our constituents, hey, we're buying a new fire truck because we're getting X number of medical, increased medical calls, and they see a ladder where a pumper show up, whereas you could say, hey, we spent sixty thousand dollars on an F-two-fifty, and they're going to the site, and we've got our half a million dollar rig sitting in the garage waiting for the next call that may come up.
The other negative to this, you know, of going to the flying squad is, is I'm having split come- split companies.
That's right.
So now, you know, if I say, you're two are going to drive, operate out of this flying squad, or quick response, whatever you want to call it, now I'm robbing two off of my apparatus to make that work. So now I'm no longer DOI compliant as far as four people and apparatus responding in a certain amount of time. That's the other negative about it. Thurman's a little bit different, and they're all in one house. And that's why I'm saying I'm experimenting with that house because of that. I mean, eventually, I mean, I would love to see two companies out there, but, I mean, I think it makes sense, but there are a lot of things, but I will promise you that, I will research it, and we will do everything we can. I think JR can, I'm very through when it comes to spending out of my budget, I try to look at things from every aspect that I can to keep costs down.
So just for my benefit, last question I have. So in that example where one firefighter got out and he was tending to whatever the situation was at the school, if a fire call would have come in, would they have left him there? They would have waited for him, but they wouldn't have probably left the person he was there helping until somebody else was there to assist.
Now, once EMS arrives, they know, we're there to assist him. You know, they know if we have something coming in, and they've got enough people and everything's good, we're going to leave. Same thing with a vehicle crash. Chief Summers officers know, we come in here to assist him on that crash. If they've got things under control, we're going to release, and we're going to go.
Thank you.
The way, the way the flying, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way a flying squad would work would be if you had personnel assigned directly to the flying squad and not split the companies up. And then, even at that point, once you split the companies up, when you get so many of the EMS calls versus the fire calls, then DOI actually steps in and no longer calls that engine an engine. So there's, there's a lot of things. If you had, if New Bern had a flying squad with two people on a rig or something, you know, to respond to those type calls, and they were assigned to that rig and not to an engine company, like Rocky Mount does, we used to do anyway.
They don't do it anymore.
They don't, you know, then it would be, you know, it would be worthwhile, and it would save us the wear and tear on those pumps.
In nutshell, Alderman, we'd have to respond with both, both vehicles, you know, if they were both free, that's what we'd have to do. That would have to respond along with the apparatus to a fire call, to be able to get those four people.
Right.
All they care about is four people and apparatus there. They don't care how they, right, that's how volunteer department do it. They might have one in truck, they've got all the volunteer people coming. So if they got four people and that apparatus there, within that timeframe, there's no qualifications.
So JR, what are you seeing with these, these firing engines? I mean, looking like what our schedule is and how much, what is being requested over the years, are we, is it beneficial for us to do any of these pre-purchases in advance and taking delivery of on a later dates? Do you see that as a big enough savings that we want to investigate further, or?
I believe if the board just, if the board chooses to move forward with that, I believe what we would do is go ahead and budget for the expense and budget for a debt service at the highest amount, which would be roughly $550,000. And then, as we, then once a contract is decided upon, then we can, then we would see what the best way to proceed would be with on the discounts. And we would only take out the debt service that we would need to cover the total cost. So if it's, if it makes sense to pay the whole thing in advance, then we would. Basically, we don't, we won't know until we actually get a contract.
When's NFPA coming out with another schedule?
July 2020.
Okay. So we would, we could possibly save as much as seven to eight percent if we order prior to that.
Correct.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll tell you, we certainly, you know, I think all the board recognizes the fact by just looking at these, these gear models of this, this equipment. I mean, we got a Suffolk Tower, this, this hour, you know, it's now 20 years old, and it's, it's our first response, one of our first response vehicles. And, you know, 93, 93, 98, 99, 2002, 2006s, I mean, we are really getting to, if we don't start purchasing now, we're going to be purchasing a whole bunch of them at one time. For years, we've been asking for, for, to start replacing some of this equipment, and it just hasn't happened. I think now we need for it to happen. So how do you want to proceed?
You go around here?
I don't know, I mean, JR, do you recommend that we look at doing a multiple purchase? Or do you recommend that we go ahead and, and get one on order? Mr. City Manager, you give me your, I know you're anxious to say something.
I don't think that, I don't think that's JR's decision to make, I think it's this board's decision to make. If y'all want to make two, I think financially, we can make it work. We will have to, you know, obviously, when you're looking at these decisions, you're looking, especially if you're doing a debt service financing of it, you're looking at a revenue from the debt that we will take out, and you're also looking at the expense. So we're going to go buy this truck, but we're going to get money from a bank to pay off this debt, essentially. So it nets zero in this budget. Where this is going to impact you is next year's budget. So you're making a decision at this point that if you, what, how long are you going to finance this for?
Uh, somewhere between 10 and 15 years.
10 or 15 years, all right. So let's say it's a 10-year loan. For, if you buy both of these, what's that amount? Do you remember?
Uh.
1.6?
Well, it's 1.6.
1.6 B, yes, it'd be 160 grand a year, probably close to 200, depending on.
200 grand a year?
Call it 200.
All right. So you're making a $200,000 decision next year that we will have to either find the money for, or hope that our increase in sales tax and adblocker taxes or whatever can overcome that revenue, that expense next year, on top of everything that we've got currently right now. If everything stayed the same, you're looking at additional $200,000 in expense. So that's the decision you're making.
What do we have coming off the debt for next year? Anything?
We do, sir. Uh, just have a second here.
And what's the number?
FY '20, we're approximately 2.2 million in debt service in the general fund going into FY '21, we're close to 1.9.
About a half a million, 300,000.
300 grand.
That's not very much.
I mean, is there any way for us to counter this decision until next year? I mean.
Well, we got to do budget. It takes a year to get the truck, so if you order today, you won't get it until next year.
Yeah, but for us to know what our budget is going to look like next year?
Well, then you're, then you're just, you're just stacking these things deeper and deeper. I mean, we're running 1993 model trucks. We got our primary ladder truck is a 1999 model. It's time, these things are ready to be replaced. In fact, they're overdue.
Chief, if you had to pick one versus two, which one would you choose to replace right now?
It's tough. You're talking about between the pumper and the tower? If you go by age and the cost increase that's coming up, I'd say the tower. If you go by the sheer volume that it runs, that it calls, goes on, I mean, it's a flip of a coin. I'm just trying to be honest with you. They're both, they're both due.
So if you order today, I'm sorry, Don, if you order today, and they have a NFPA update, our order will come in, will go in before the NFPA update, which is about, which will be an 8% savings on a, 5% savings on a million dollars for the ladder truck. I'm sorry.
So the thing that it is, go ahead and put it in the budget, and then by that time, we should have maybe one or two things that's coming off to free us up debt-wise.
It's about 300 grand that will come off the debt service for next year as it's planned right now.
Correct.
With what we have in the budget as well, that we're looking at potentially, but obviously 300 grand, and you've got 200 grand of this, so, I mean, you're almost washing to some extent.
What's the fire service vehicle, number one, for $65,000?
That's, that was actually in the budget.
Okay, so that one's already?
That is, that is two, will be twofold. The state has provided us a gooseneck trailer and a forklift for moving around things during a storm. So it's going to utilize that, and also wildland fire skid unit once we take that in.
So is that already in the budget, JR?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. So you, just help me out. You said we had about 300,000 coming off next year. And the debt service for these two pieces of equipment roughly is going to be how much?
Uh, roughly is going to be, actually, I can get a better figure, hold on.
And that's financing it 15 years, right?
Uh, 10 years.
10?
10-year, 100, 10-year would be 191,000.
I'll finance it 15, because we keep them for 30 years.
And we could go 15. We could, we could go 15. I mean, if you want, it'd be 191,000 for 15-year, I'm sorry, excuse me, 10-year for 15-year, it is, 15-year would be, it drops to 138.
I make a motion that we authorize the staff to move forward with purchasing the engine pumper and the tower.
Second.
Second, thank you.
Motion has seconded for the discussion. Let's do a roll call on this one, just be careful, and start with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Ashton?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Anything else on this, this item? Mr. Stevens, anything else on item 14?
Uh, no, sir, that's it.
Does any, Alderman have anything else on item number 14? Before we move on? Let's go to item number 15.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 15 is to conduct a public hearing on the proposed budget for FY 1920. The recommended budget for FY 1920 was distributed to the board on 23rd of April, at which time the highlights were reviewed by myself. The budget has been made available to the public for inspection in the city's clerk, in the city clerk's office, also at the library and on our city's website. The budget workshop was conducted on the 30th of April, which was open to the public. The approval of the budget will be considered at an upcoming board meeting, which will probably be the next one, depending on what kind of comments we get tonight, or if you wish to delay it any further. But ultimately, the reason why we had item number 14 there is if you wanted to make a decision on that, so we can incorporate that into the budget and have that ready, but we wanted to do that prior to the public hearing in case anybody wanted to comment on it with the decision that you just made. So other than that, the budget, I haven't heard of a lot of changes, other than we incorporated the changes that the board made during the budget workshop, and.
On the other item, and I guess, again, I don't know how you're going to handle that is the elevator. I know we don't have any numbers, or we don't have anything, but I really would like to move forward with it in this next fiscal year. So I don't know how, and I guess that would be another financing option in the year after.
Once again, I, I think if, if the board wants to put some seed money into the budget, we can do that, but ultimately, it is going to end up in a project fund if you're looking at doing a major capital project to improve this facility to incorporate an elevator, whether that's exterior, interior, all the quotes that we're getting on an elevator or estimates we're getting on the elevator are upwards of 700 to, 700,000 to a million bucks.
I would, I would recommend, and again, this is 2019, and this thing has stalled off and on for years and years for one reason or another, but I would go ahead and put about a million dollar estimate on it in this budget. If it comes in at 755, if it comes in over a million, we might not be.
So.
Now, that's just my, I'm just opening it up.
I understand whatever you say, put a million dollar estimate in it, but when you're working on, in the budget, we put a million dollars in expense, we need to come up with a million dollars.
Revenue source would be other than a stall loan.
Okay.
Purchase a revenue stream of a million bucks and offset with the expense over a 10-year period, whatever the local government commission approved, 10-year payment plan.
If I might, if you would like, if you would like to go that route, then I would suggest we come back to you, without the next meeting, the meeting, the subsequent meeting with a project fund to establish the project fund itself for that million dollars rather than putting in the operating budget.
Well, that's just my thought. I just, I'm opening that up for discussion.
However, we have to do it, but we got, we need to move forward.
I think we need to create a project fund, that's the problem.
I agree.
At this time, if it's okay with board, let me bring up at the public hearing, get any public comment input from the public. And at that time, after that's done, we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll further discuss that elevator. So is that okay with everybody? At this time, I'm going to call for a public hearing. Anybody in the public that would like to come forward, ask questions, make comments concerning the ensuing year's budget, you're more welcome to come up at this time. Anybody from the public?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and Mayor. My name is Caffrey Barfield, 1105 North Pastor Street. Concerned about item 16.
Oh, we're not on that one yet, Mr. Barfield.
I'm busy.
Right, we're, we're doing a public hearing for our budget, that's going to be next.
And we will, there will, there will be a public hearing on that item.
Okay, I thought you was finished with, you know, I'm sorry, my bad.
Yes, sir. We'll be right there.
Okay, thank you.
That's next. Mr. Woods, did you have something, sir?
Yeah, I couldn't pull the budget up on the website. I mean, I was out of town for that meeting, and I didn't know it was at the library. And I just tried, I just went to the city's webpage, and I didn't see the budget on there at all.
Sir, it's under the finance department's, what?
I just went to, it's on the, on the finance side of this, and it didn't, it didn't come up on my phone. It just showed me the fees and everything on the finance side. I mean, I didn't know it was at the library, because I would have pulled, I would have got it at the library. And I don't know how many other citizens knew that it was available at the library.
It's under, to the left of, you see that ugly picture there, over to the left of it, it says finance, and underneath it says budget fees in CAFER. If you click on that site, it, there's a section just below it. First section is the conference manual financial report, the next one is the proposed city budget for fiscal year 2019-20. It is right there, sorry.
You said it's under finance, correct?
Yes, sir.
I'm not, I'm not seeing that. Let me sit back down and see if I can find it.
Did I understand, y'all, you say that everyone have anything for the budget?
On budget?
Budget. Still, you have a little fat in your face. Bless you. I have a problem with sidewalking. Failed twice in my neighborhood. And I had four operations in the last 17 months. And I called down here, I haven't heard anything. It's North Pastor Street, right across from the dog park. So I mean, if you can get someone to look at that there, you know, I appreciate that there, and put that in your budget.
Yes, sir, thank you. Be glad to look into that. Anybody else from the public that would like to come forward, ask questions, make comments, statements about the proposed budget? Welcome to come up.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is seconded to close the public hearing and any discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, we're now in the discussion phase, and I think we were talking about the elevator.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we create a project fund for the elevator, and then make necessary adjustments. I guess it doesn't impact this budget, correct? And then move forward, and Mr. Stevens getting the necessary quotes and whatever we need to come back at a later time.
Second.
Motion is seconded for the discussion. See, now, let's have a roll call on that item, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Ashton?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
What else under number, item number 15? I will mention there, there was a concern session, one come up tonight, is not here tonight, to talk about the underside. to talk about the undersized culverts in the city. I think we discussed that right much tonight. I did hear in, during earlier conversation, discussion about a particular culvert that needed to be sized to accommodate storms like Hurricane Florence. And, uh, that's not a singular item in there, but it's, it's all these culverts. And, uh, again, I just appreciate the staff's and the board's direction toward, on any future developments, whatever. Not that it would put any additional hardship on the developer, but that the systematic, um, proper capillary effect to the hydrologies of a given system be considered in addition to future development sets to the impact downstream and to what proper culvert sizing needs to be determined. Um, so anybody else have anything under number fifteen, the budget?
Mayor, just...
Yes.
Question, comment. I'm not sure what it would fall on there, but I, I was going to do this under our fire discussion about capital plan, but since we're talking about budgeting and we're looking ahead to next year, the various expenditures that we may or may not have. Um, Mr. Savitelli, I asked you if you could get a number together for me so the board could be prepared. So with the addition of a fire station, the capital cost of building, the operational cost annually, um, and the apparat- did you figure the apparatus that would be required for that station?
Actually, I apologize if not.
Okay, so just without the fire truck included, could you, could you share with us what that, the increased property tax valuation we will need to cover that increased cost?
Uh, yes, sir. Based on the proposed tax rate of forty-eight point two-two cents, uh, for the, for fiscal year twenty, uh, fiscal year twenty, uh, we would need approximately one hundred and ninety-six million dollars in increased value to cover that up for that cost.
So to put it in relation, Columbia Development Group was thirty-five million?
Correct.
Um, if you use two hundred thousand dollars, which is around number four average home in New Bern, we're looking at a thousand homes. So I just wanted us to be thinking about that increase that we were going to have to have in our tax base to cover that cost, because it's, it's quite a lot. Um, obviously, we've made some efforts toward the, the stock, rolling stock tonight. Um, but there's a tremendous increase in what I think we need to do, and I'm not going to speak bad about any predecessor, but I think what we need to do is start looking when we have this growth, that, that increase in tax revenue doesn't get divvied up amongst other things and other projects when we have a requirement to provide public safety, police, fire, public works and parks and recreation, that we make sure that we, we keep that increased revenue allocated in s- uh, specific directions that it needs to go in. Because when we annex something in, we're taking responsibility to provide that service. And I think in the past, I think it's probably safe to say that we've taken that money, we've done other things with it. We need to start, I, I, I'm, I'm not advocating we start any kind of fund or savings account, but we need to be thinking in mind, I mean, we, we all thought there was going to be this massive reduction in tax value with the storm that went through this year. Fortunately, that didn't really happen because we had enough growth to offset it. But I just want everyone to understand how much growth it's going to take or pay for that, and eventually, we're going to have to do it. So I just thought I would a good number to share. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Any comments?
Mr. Stevens, will, um, the budget then come before us at our May twenty-eighth meeting or will it come before us in June? Or does?
I can have for May twenty-eighth.
Yeah, I think we can have for the twenty-eighth. I think there's simple changes and so we can get that ready.
Are we able to vote on the twenty-eighth?
Sure. You're ready to.
Yeah. Um, maybe it might be helpful if we do that to Mr. Wood's, um, concern with not being able to find it. You know how we put the hurricane stuff on the front? Maybe there might be an easier way to put something on the front of our website to just say, you know, FY twenty budget or something like that, just an easier, because I mean, most people...
She's doing it right now.
Okay, great. Thank you. This is difficult sometimes. You don't think to go under finance or something like that. So let's make it easy for our citizens to find it and then, once it's adopted, you can put it back into finance. But while, you know, we're out in the viewing stage, might be a good opportunity. That's okay.
Okay. Anything else? Let's go to item number sixteen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Item number sixteen is a request to have a public hearing on the consideration of an ordinance amendment changing the city's election method from nonpartisan with runoff to a nonpartisan plurality method. Uh, as you recall, at our twenty-third of April meeting, a public hearing was called to receive comments on an ordinance amendment to change the city's election method from nonpartisan with runoff to a nonpartisan plurality method, beginning with an election to be held in November of twenty twenty-one. After conducting the public hearing, no further action is needed at this particular meeting. There will be, uh, another ordinance amendment, uh, item that will be on your next meeting, which will be May twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen. So tonight will be only a public hearing.
Okay. Is any, more hand questions, comments for open public hearing? At this time, item number sixteen, we will have a public hearing. Anybody that would like to come forward and ask any questions, make any comments concerning the consideration of an ordinance amendment, you're more than welcome to come up. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
You still live in that same address, aren't you?
I don't know. We all going up on tax. I might have to move. And serious, I would like to know, uh...
Mr. Barfield, you, you really need to tell everybody your name's Popeye. I don't want everybody to know your outfit.
Well, that's what it is. It's only seven six years in July.
Bless you.
Uh, I'm concerned about i- item sixteen. How y'all come up with this, uh...
Well, we had a, we had, we had a, a earlier flavor that failed, and so we have a new flavor of the month that, that we're, we have now. So, um, but one part of this popular is we're looking at opportunities to save some money, um, in the election process. Uh, that, that was worth consideration, but board members, y'all can answer that if you're...
Well, Mr. Barfield, do you know that ninety-seven percent of the state of North Carolina uses the plurality method of electing?
No, I don't. But I also like to know, do y'all have the right to change this stuff? Did you go through the board election in Raleigh? Uh, voting is very important, very important, you know? And my concern is, uh, did you change, ask the state to adopt this? Do y'all have the right to change the way the voting system is in New Bern?
Mr. Attorney, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, yes, sir. We do. The legislature gives us in, in G S one sixty-eight, one oh one, the option to pick off a menu as to the three or four different methods that the state approves. And as long as you pick one of those precise methods, you can amend your charter to change your voter methodology. But it's got to be one of those exact three or four options. Anything that deviates from those three or four requires a local bill, which requires the general assembly to adopt it and put it in place for the city.
So which one of y'all brought this to the board? Do I have a right to ask that question?
Yes, sir. I made the motion.
The reason why, if you don't mind me asking?
No, sir. Um, because if we have an October election with a November runoff, it was going to cost us about sixty-four thousand dollars because we're the only municipality in Craven County who has an October election, so we have to pay for all the polling places to be open. So there was another, um, option that came before us to change the election to the presidential year, and that failed. So this was an alternative brought forth to have the election just in November, on election day, when all the other municipalities have it in Craven County, so that we can split the cost of the election. And it would cost us roughly, you know, twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay, Ms. Bing, um, Ms. Bingle?
Yes, sir.
Let me ask you this question here. Is the wards going to stay the same?
Yes, sir.
So what y'all are saying, if you have a, uh, a tie, you won't break the tie?
It won't be a tie.
There won't be no tie?
Yes.
Who gets the most folks winning the election, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now I want to ask you another question. Uh, getting a little old timey.
No, it's okay.
Do each ward have money for their ward?
Did you say each ward have money?
Yes. You allocate so much money for each ward?
They, that changed years ago. Yeah, years ago. You mean like discretionary money or something like that?
Yeah. You don't have it anymore?
Yes.
We each have a thousand dollars, but I think you're, he's talking about to back a long time ago where each ward was designated so much money to be...
Yeah, y'all don't have that anymore?
To support the vote, the voting.
No, to support the ward.
Right.
In, in reference to voting?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Say, say, for example, I might get an offer, but I had a couple phone calls coming. Say, for example, I live eleven oh north Passage Street. I've been there forty-three years and I haven't seen my street paved yet. I'm just, I'm just saying this, you know, but you go to other part of the neighborhood, National Avenue look good. Prom is looking good. But my street, no reflection on you, uh, Alderman, but you know who I'm coming from. So I wish you go back to the old standard, give each ward so much money where they could keep up their ward. Now, it might be out of order though, but I still say that changing the elections is saving money. But I guarantee you won't get many people to vote neither, and voting is one of the most important thing we have. Thank you. You have any question?
Want to add questions?
Mr. Popeye, my, my only question to you is that, um, I think the importance of voting, because I'm a advocate of voting, is everyone is used to it to be in November. And I think when we have the ability to save money and remove the October election and bring it to November, not on a presidential year, I think you're, you're going to bring out more people. And I feel that in a plurality, I feel that if individuals go out and do their due diligence and speak to the citizens and sell themselves and their resume and what they plan to do, um, running for Alderman, I think the best person is going to win regardless if people think that individuals are trying to stack the deck. I feel if you want to run and that's what's in your heart, you're going to run and you're going to do everything you need to do. And I feel like going to a November election is going to be a benefit to the city, voting wise and saving money.
I think this is something that needs to be addressed too. Uh, understanding is good. It was said to me that you have the right to vote for anybody. See, anyway, with, uh, years ago, you had that. You vote for everybody, anybody you want to. So this individual was saying that you're going back to that same standard.
Yes, sir.
You understand where I'm coming from?
It's still wards.
I know y'all some of the youngest people though, but, uh, it used to be years ago that you could vote all over the city. So I wish that you could get some information out to the public, that it's not vote for everybody only in your ward.
Right, that is correct.
And explain to them whoever win, about one vote, that's it, no more runoff. And then explain to them about the cost also.
Right. Thank you for coming and speaking tonight.
Yeah, you know, I'm getting old now, but I still got a lot of power.
Would love to see you out.
Well, hopefully next year, we'll have an elevator get you up here and make it a whole lot easier, okay?
I think we're going to do it this time.
I hope so.
Anybody else on the public want to come up? Yes, sir. Come, come out forward.
Uh, Mike Duffy, one twenty-one Morning Dove Trail here in New Bern. I've lived here, uh, just about four years now, so, uh... First of all, I have no concerns about the cost of the election. Uh, what you guys are doing here is very, very serious business. This is not Mayberry work that you're doing. This is very serious business. And I was listening on Facebook before I came down and, you know, the, the cost of the election, I think we're talking about basically the cost of one employee and you guys are responsible for what, about four hundred altogether or something like that? You know, so thinking of it that way. I have no concerns about rediligence, uh, in terms of if somebody, uh, is not reelected or chooses not to run, continuing on the board for even six months or even possibly longer. I, I've watched this process, have a hundred percent confidence that you guys will continue to do the right thing regardless. I also understand and appreciate your commitment to serve your whole term that you were elected to, to serve. So my suggestion is change nothing this year. Leave it as it is. Especially in light of what I believe, uh, Alderman, Odom brought out last time, that in most, if not all instances where we had runoffs, they did reverse the, the, the initial result. And, you know, so now we're talking about a person might get elected with an average turnout in a good year, and it wasn't even that good last time, of, you know, thirty percent in an off-year election, you know, in an odd-year election, which is the best we've ever done. So suppose you have four candidates, you could be talking about thirty-five percent of thirty percent, and somebody's going to get in on that. And who knows who that would be or, or, or what their knowledge of city government, you know, might be. I mean, you guys see now that, that, you know, you need some background in this and really got to put some work into it. So my suggestion would leave it as it is for now. Continue with the runoff to make sure we get, you know, a, a true reading on what people want. We just had a, a, um, Republican primary with seventeen candidates, you know, so we, we, in some cases, I'm sorry to say they couldn't be a runoff. And, you know, then the next time, consider changing it, leave it for two, two thousand twenty-one. Sorry, I have your terms, but consider moving it to the election year in two thousand twenty-four to the presidential election system. And then, um, that would be a three-year term, but you would know ahead of time that it was a three-year term. That would both save money and you'd get, last year as an election, we got sixty-two percent turnout. In a city only year, in an odd year, the best we've ever done is thirty percent. Big difference. So I hope you'll consider that. I appreciate everything you do. I'm not concerned about the spending or your motives or anything of that nature whatsoever. So I just want to see a little more democratic process. And I think, um, that we also need to encourage more people to come and apply and, and, and run for these positions. We had three unopposed last time and, you know, to make it fair, I think you got to pay yourselves fairly so that everybody can afford to do it, you know, so. So I appreciate everything you do, so, and, uh, hope you'll, as usual, make the right decisions. Take care.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Hi, Mr. Duffy, I just wanted to thank you for your emails.
Yes.
Oh, I appreciate the correspondence.
It's true, you know, so, I mean, you know, so.
Thank you for...
You're absolutely entitled.
Keep on sending.
And so, and I think you're entitled to a little more reimbursement too. Take care.
Okay, um, anybody else in the public would like to come forward and make any comments concerning this item?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion and second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? See, and, uh, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Got the next one. I'm waiting for you now. We've closed it. We're moving on. Number seventeen.
No, I mean, uh, do you want to take any action on this or anything?
No, it's, it's the next meeting.
Okay. Let's go to item number seventeen. I, I mean, I just thought, I thought that was just going, continuing. Go, go right here.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Item number seventeen is consideration, uh, by the board to adopt an ordinance to amend section sixty-six dash eighty-five of chapter sixty-six for city-sponsored events. Uh, as you recall, representative from the Greater Duffieldfield Residence Council appeared before the board on the twenty-third of April, uh, to request that this year's Duff Fest, uh, Duff Fest be held in June instead of May. Uh, Duff Fest is a city-sponsored event that's listed under section sixty-six dash eighty-five of the city's code of ordinances. And in order for that to be changed, uh, it lists it as a May event. And, uh, at the request of, or at the recommendation of Scott, uh, he, he thought that the board should change it since the ordinances represent law. So therefore, the board is asked to consider adopting an ordinance amending, uh, and this change in schedule from May to June, and there's information in your packet. I will be happy to answer any questions you have.
Mayor? Quick question from City Attorney. I, I by no means want to open up a can with this, but is this a requirement that we have this as a law when we have a city-sponsored event, or can this be done as a policy decision by the board?
It can be a policy decision.
The reason I ask is so next year, if Duff Fest decides to have theirs in May, we're going to have to take this whole thing up again.
Right. I totally agree. I was curious about why we were going back and forth on this. Because they may decide that they like the nineteenth and stay, and they may go back to May. I don't know.
And I, I mean, I remember when we added the George Washington, so at Southern Tour a couple years ago, it, it was one-year event. We went through this whole regimen role of adding it. They haven't done it since then. So if there's a better way, maybe, you know, staff can make a recommendation to the board on a, or a subcommittee or something could work on this. I just think it's crazy for us to change ordinance when we change it.
I will say, um...
Did you give this from one of us?
I believe this was in the previous administration.
I believe this was in the previous administration, uh, before me, that the decision was made to put it as law because there was a lot of consternation with regards to which ones were supported, which ones weren't supported. So they basically come up with this ordinance to say, here's the ones that are supported and the, the months in which they occur. Uh, if, it's the direction of the Board for us to move to, uh, formalizing an administrative policy that these are the ones that we support, we can do that, but, you know, obviously that's, that comes at administration and then ultimately I would need to come to the Board to get direction from the Board to sway from that administrative policy based on your direction, which can be done, takes it out from the books, gets it out of the ordinances, uh, but, uh, I'm happy to do whatever. I think that's probably the cleanest way.
Yeah, it just puts it back in your hands and if we start queuing up every year because they want their events added to policy, the law makes it a little tougher to, to deal with. That was the theory, um, behind the chat.
Is there any way to make it a little broader in the sense, these are the, the events and not attach a date to them in case for some reason or other the date changes or there's an issue or something happens or they don't have the event that year? And then it just gives us the flexibility?
List, list the name of the event?
There's certain situations I would say that, that, that would be good as long as, you know, I, I, I could tell you, here's some of the things that I've dealt with.
Um, so changing the, the, the months in which they happen, that's not as much of a concern to me because, you know, the bridge run used to be in October or September, whatever it was, now it's in March. So that's not an issue to me. What, what kind of sometimes becomes complicated is when you have events that combine with others or you have events that change their names. Uh, that's happened, I think, already, and, and there was some concern, um, in the, I, I think it was the previous Board, uh, with regard, I think it was, uh, what was it, the Martin Luther King Parade event?
Yeah.
Uh, that we had, but then it, it turned into, uh, the Black History Month Parade and stuff like that. So things started becoming a little bit more complicated, so we tried to work with it, but when it's law and it's an ordinance, it, it, it makes it very static. Uh, so, uh, we can definitely try to broaden it up, um, and.
It helps you guys plan, helps you guys plan.
It definitely helps us plan for sure. And it's easy whenever we say, this is not a city-sponsored event, so therefore there will be fees associated with it. They have a list, here they are, this, this is the ones that we work from, so losing the months is not that big of a deal, but the, the, the naming is, is something that's pretty important.
All ready.
Sorry.
So right now, sounds like we just need to go ahead and do how we're doing.
Again, this is, I mean, this, it's an amendment, but it's not, uh, not terribly complicated.
Well, they just have to remember to come back to you guys and ask for it to change, okay? I'd like to make a motion, adopting an ordinance to amend section sixty-eight dash eighty-five of chapter sixty-six for city-sponsored events?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any further discussion?
The only thing I'd like to say is I think we should move forward so this don't happen again by removing the, the, the dates. You know, and just had the events and whatever the.
Plan issues on this side?
Yeah, thank you.
And the other thing, in amending maybe this motion, can we get rid of the George Washington Southern Tour?
Well, I don't, I don't have, I mean, this is not, this is not adopted tonight. I'm happy to take some direction.
I see, okay.
This is the law, it's on the agenda. We can do this or nothing.
And nothing, okay.
Tonight.
I re-vote that.
But in the future, we can certainly.
Look at all this, clean it, okay, clean it up.
Yes, ma'am.
So roll call starting with Alderman Odom?
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries item number eighteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, item number eighteen is consideration of Board adopting ordinance for demolition of fourteen twelve Washington Street. Uh, staff is seeking to demolish a single-wide mobile home that's located at this address. The mobile home has been without electrical service since January the ninth, two thousand thirteen, due to multiple minimum code violations. There was a hearing that was held before the Chief Building Inspector on the eleventh of April, two thousand nineteen, and a dilapidated order was issued to vacate, repair, or demolish the dwelling within thirty days. On April the twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, the dwelling was further damaged by a fire. To date, no permits have been applied for and the structure remains non-compliant and unsafe. There's a memo that's included in your packet along with all the photos and chronological events, uh, that staff have taken regarding this address. So we'll have to answer any questions you may have.
Board have questions?
I make a motion and we adopt the ordinance for demolition of fourteen twelve Washington Street.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there discussion?
Alderman Best, anything, any comments? I know this is in your ward, but it's obvious this thing is, is dangerous.
Well, you look at that picture in there.
Yes, okay.
But it's, it is, it's always been a problem, but it seems like the problem took care of itself. I'm just glad that the resident that lived in the mobile home at that time was not severely hurt more than he was, so.
Please, have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries item number nineteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number nineteen is consideration of Board adopting ordinance for demolition of nine fifteen Sampson Street. On the fourth of February, two thousand sixteen, a minimum housing violation letter was sent to the owners of the single-family structure located at the subject address. Interior and exterior inspection of, uh, the nineteen forty-five structure revealed multiple minimum housing code violations, including broken windows and structural instability. The hearing was held before the Chief Building Inspector on the ninth of April, two thousand nineteen. The owners were given thirty days to bring the property into compliance. To date, no permits have been applied for. The structure remains non-compliant and unsafe. Uh, there's a list of the chronological events along with photos in your packet and, uh, we'll answer any questions.
The Board have questions?
Yes, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just wanted to ask, Ms. Sampson, um, is this your property of nine fifteen Sampson Street? Okay, I just wanted to make sure and then know if you might have had some questions or for us or anything, okay?
Um, I did, I checked, I did check with, um, with Robbie Morgan, because he is on the redevelopment commission, whatever. I call him the mayor of Sampson Street, sorry. You're the, you're the queen of Sampson Street, but he's the mayor of Sampson Street. And, um, he did try to reach out to the family members. It's a, here, it was their last name, and so he feels that this should be done. He actually brought it to our attention. Is that correct, Mr. Regeri, on our walking tour that day? When we did that walking tour, he brought this property to our attention, how badly it had, um, you know, was falling down or whatever, so. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it. So I'd like to make the motion that we adopt the ordinance, uh, for the demolition of nine fifteen Sampson Street.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries item number twenty.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twenty is consideration of Board adopting resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the local government commission for approval of financing the City Market Workforce Development Center project. Board previously approved matching funds for the EDA grant for the City Market Workforce Development Center project. Those funds will be secured through debt financing. Because the financing involves real property, approval is required from the LGC if we were to move forward. Uh, the proposed resolution authorizes the filing of the application with the LGC and it is anticipated the application will be considered at the LGC's June fourth, two thousand nineteen meeting. There's a memo that's included in your packet, Mr. Savatelli will answer any questions.
Board have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the LGC for approval of financing the City Market Workforce Development Center project. Is there any?
Motion and second. Did you get the second?
Well, who's the second? It sounded like the top.
Flip a coin.
Is there further discussion on this item? Let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries item number twenty-one.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twenty-one is consideration of Board adopting resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the local government commission for approval of financing roadway improvements. Um, this item, uh, will be for the Oaks Road and a portion of the Trent Road, uh, roadway improvements. Uh, because the debt involves improvements to real property, once again, this property, uh, this, uh, application requires approval, uh, the Board and from the LGC. The proposed resolution authorizes the filing of this application with the LGC and it's anticipated that they will consider this once again at their June fourth, two thousand nineteen meeting.
Board have questions, Mayor?
Yes.
Is this currently in our budget? We have funds allocated for this?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, for the debt service portion, yes, sir.
So now that you answered, I'm gonna ask this question. I, I thought we took Trent Road off of this. When we were looking for funding and I said, hey, I, I know it would affect our area, but I'm willing to forego pushing to have Trent Road done in lieu of something else, but.
Last year during the retreat?
But if it's budgeted and you got it in there, then.
It's, it's, it's budgeted. This is for the developers' portion. Um, I don't recall that, if what you're speaking of was.
You know, we were talking about three-lane and all of Trent Road? Is that not what, is this something else?
Yeah, this, this is, this is the portion that belonged, that, uh, where we're reimbursing the developer for that section of Trent Road that, uh.
Oh, so it's not costing us anything then?
It's part of the developer agreement.
So, okay, makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, any questions, comments?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that, um, we adopt resolution authorizing filing the application with LGC for approval of financing the project for the Trent Road slash Martin Luther King Improvement Project in Oaks Road.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, let's get to appointments. Alderman Bingle?
I have none, thank you.
Alderman Harris?
Um, I am putting a call out for anyone that wants to be on planning and zoning board. Um, I have a spot open, um, so please email me your resumes, because I need someone to appoint to the planning and zoning board. That's all.
Alderman Best?
Yes, um, Brenda, do you know if Mr. Biskey's been contacted or if he has an interest in serving again on the HPC? Or even Jeff, would you know? Is it important, I mean, I, I wasn't able to get up with him. I wanted to call and ask him if he was, if, if he was interested in being reappointed. You have any idea?
I don't know if.
Do you know, I mean, is it important that this one take place tonight or?
He's allowed to continue to serve until a new appointment is made.
Okay. Would you, would you check then? So I have none, sir.
Okay, Alderman Kinsey?
Not at this time.
Okay. Alderman Best?
Not at this time.
Alderman Odom?
No, sir.
Attorneys report?
Nothing important, Mayor, other than I will meet you in a closed session briefly if any of our meeting.
City managers report?
Um, I'll keep this brief as well, uh, since it's been rather a long meeting, I want to give two quick updates, um. So, uh, just kind of where we are with some of our FEMA stuff, um, I want to give you an update as to where we are on some of our submissions. Um, as you recall, we removed some boats, uh, that were, uh, in front of Stanley White, or, I'm sorry, not Stanley White, but Lawson Creek Park, uh, that totaled about fifteen thousand dollars. That's been submitted to FEMA. Uh, they've sent back a request for information, uh, and that has been responded to, so that one's in process. Debris, uh, we're close to the final submission with a couple punchless items that, uh, were requested, uh, by our consultant, uh, and, uh, from, uh, FEMA. So a final summary is being completed now. Uh, that will include parks and the overall citywide submission. That's about four, four and a half million dollars. Uh, we have about, uh, four point, uh, two five million dollars with electric, uh, that we're getting ready to submit, uh, that we're getting close on. Uh, the citywide ditch project, obviously you've got an update from Matt on, so I'm not gonna go any further with that. Uh, we're working through our insurance, uh, our agents, um, are working with, uh, our consultants on this to try to get our insurance proceeds back. The flood insurance program, we're waiting on approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to be received on this policy. We have a standard flood policy with a million dollars coverage. We're waiting on that payment as well. Uh, and our wind coverage, we, uh, a partial wind package is close to completion. Uh, that'll be about three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars that we'll be getting from that. Try to start restoring some of our, um, uh, money. Uh, some of you may be asking, uh, with regards to Stanley White, our architect has completed his analysis, uh, and, uh, on the building, uh, regarding the substantial damage, he did identify it as substantially damaged in his report as well. We knew that. Uh, the insurance identified it as that as well. Uh, so now, this documentation is now being compiled, put into a submission that we will put through the four twenty-eight mitigation process. Uh, and with hopes that we'll hear something back from them, uh, once again, three to six months is kind of the timeframe that our consultant gave us on that. So we're hoping that it's faster. Um, I will say that, um, we had, uh, our, our emergency, um, sorry, I can't get my other notes here. Uh, our emergency protective measures have also been submit, uh, submitted. FEMA requested some changes and additional information. Uh, they wanted a one-cent revision, um, that, that was completed. Uh, we're waiting on a reply from BFS, uh, BFIS on some boot stuff, but, uh, unfortunately, that's about nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars. It's being held up on a couple questions and one cent. Uh, so, uh, I'm hoping that we will get some response on that here relatively soon as well. But that kind of give you an update as to where we are. Obviously, there are tons of these project worksheets that we're working on and need to submit, um, uh, multiple that our consultant are submitting through the process for us, but that's just some of the big ticket items I wanted to kind of get on real quick. Finally, um, talked with, uh, several of the Board members and it looks as if we are looking to try to implement a hurricane preparedness workshop to make us a little bit more prepared, our community a little bit more prepared, uh, uh, for this upcoming, uh, hurricane season, which starts June one. Um, so we want to, uh, uh, right now, staff is gonna investigate some options for us, uh, and, and locations for us to potentially have a workshop, uh, that would be open to the community, open to the public. Um, what we're thinking and kind of brainstorming about is, uh, very similar to the city's, um, uh, benefits fair that we have, is potentially have booths set up to where we can have some, some professionals from the insurance fields, professionals from the legal field, from the professionals from the building field, maybe where the public community can come in, they can ask pointed questions of these professionals in their respective fields and, and kind of, uh, get an idea about what can I do to prepare, what can I do to fix my home, what can I, or, you know, uh, make my, my home a little bit more resilient. Open up a, a dialogue with these professionals and maybe they can provide some recommendations. So that's one of the things that we're looking to do and help make our community a little bit more prepared for the upcoming hurricane season. Uh, and, and future hurricane seasons if they make some, uh, permanent repairs. So, uh, we'll identify some dates on that relatively soon, work with some of these professionals, uh, to try to identify whom we could get to volunteer some time, come sit in on, on these, uh, these workshops. Um, and then once we get that, we'll let the Board know so you can share that with your constituents and we'll get it out on our social media and public pages. So that's kind of what I have tonight as far as comments.
It's a great idea. Appreciate the staff doing that. I think that the citizens, that will be received very well by our citizens, so that's a great idea.
And we would like to get this, you know, later than by mid-June from right now through, we don't want to have this in August or September, right?
Right.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Stevens on here? Uh, new, new business? Uh, Mr. Brad?
Yes, sir. Um, had a few complaints over the past week or so about a low-flying airplane. Um, have no idea what the situation is, but I will let you know that the city of New Bern has no jurisdiction over it. So feel free to contact the airport if you have questions about that plane. Um, and if you find out, let us know, because I'm curious myself. I made a phone call and I didn't even answer back.
I was told he was third-living for a while. Little yellow plane?
Yeah, it's, I think Old Town has had some planes, Haywood, Haywood Creek has had some, as well as Cypress Shores. That's, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Best?
Um, I, I don't know how the Board, they feel about this, but I'm gonna put it out there. Um, within our special appropriation funds, we, each ward, we receive a thousand dollars. And, um, I just wanted to know if, I don't use my thousand dollars with, could those funds be rolled over to the next year? I mean, I, I, because I, the first year I didn't have a lot of in, um, city-sponsored events that I could actually give some of my money to, um, different, um, communities in my ward. And now I'm having a lot of people approaching me about this funds here, funds there, so I didn't know if that was something that we, is it, JR, would it require a lot of tracking and whatever to keep up with it or this, you know, something that? Or this, you know, something that you, the board don't feel that is, how, how do you feel about that?
I think if you're spending it on a qualified thing, then you should be able to do that. I mean, it's doing something, we don't have an issue with it. It's...
So, so what you're saying is if you get a thousand dollars this year, you don't spend it.
Exactly.
Next year, you get two thousand dollars and it just builds up?
Well, no, the, the thousand dollars that I previously have, um, gets rolled over to the next year if I don't use it.
So you'd have two thousand dollars to spend in the next year.
Board have any questions or problems or you gonna make a motion on that or...
I just want to make sure the board didn't have a problem with it first.
Well, we...
Down making a motion.
We, yeah.
Okay.
Does anybody have a problem?
So you have to adjust the budget, right?
Yes, ma'am. What would happen is, uh, when we get into, uh, we do a rollover, P.O., budget rollover, uh, August, uh, twelfth of August. And at that time, what we would do is we would roll over any unexpended monies from board appropriations into the subsequent year if we, if they desire to do that.
Is this gonna require a lot of work for you this year? If so, then we, I'll just request it for next year.
It's, it doesn't, will take a whole lot of...
I'm trying to date some, like, more...
Well, I, I'm just thinking of the, the, um, it, it strikes me as one thing to, to, to roll over one thousand dollars. It strikes me as more challenging every year to track everyone's unspent balance and, and roll, roll, roll. And everyone's rolling twenty dollars, a hundred and nineteen dollars. You know, maybe it's a one-time exception to roll the entire thousand.
Right.
Just to, just to make an accommodation, but as a policy to roll everyone's, you know, unspent dollars, it just strikes me as a hassle.
That would be a headache, yes.
Can we just do hers then?
Sure, yeah. It's the one, one thousand dollars, nothing gets spent this year, just roll it all over next year, it's two thousand. That, that would be a lot of accommodation, but, uh, just wanna make sure we weren't, we weren't thinking that everyone's gonna start rolling fractional dollars every year.
That's why I asked the question first, would it be a problem?
It's a great question.
Because it's gonna create a problem, you know? There's a need, I wouldn't even ask you to do it.
Next year and next year, if we just do her...
She's gonna roll over, yeah, Alderman Best is gonna roll over her entire one thousand dollars with nothing spent?
Seven hundred and some dollars.
Okay, okay.
And the only reason why I'm asking this is because I've had a lot of out, uh, people coming to me asking me, can I help them with this, this and that for a seat, so I'm thinking that.
Well, it's not too late, you still have the...
Exactly.
Yeah, you got till June, I guess. June third of this calendar. Right. Is that correct, is that...
No, it'll be wrong.
Well, that was my question too. You, you're sure you can't spend it this fiscal year? You can't spend it by the end of June?
Because the events that I have coming up is not gonna be until July and August.
I got you.
Can you write the check now? Can you write the...
I asked that question and I was told that it would be...
We can make some of those purchases now. There, uh, just as a reminder, the, the policy is reimbursement basis, so if, uh, somebody, if, for example, somebody, uh, the board desires to, uh, make purchases for National Night Out that occur since July, August, uh, but they want to go ahead and get some of the plates and supplies now, I really don't see an issue with that. But however, I want to remind you all that anything unused, per the policy, is required to come back to the city for, to be used by city staff or other, for events for the city, so...
I wish I would just do a gift card, 'cause, I mean, or something.
Gift card?
'Cause that is so...
So you're trying to tell me...
You gotta go spend your money, then go get a receipt. I mean, you know, bring it to you, come back, get a check, that's too much.
Yeah, there, there's other, there's other options. I mean, we, if we could pay it with, directly with a purchasing card, we've done that in the past as well.
Right, I, I, like I did for National Night, I said, hey, Ms. Brenda, could we go and get this together? And that's what we did. So I mean...
I, so, if I had for National, I'll just use National Night Out and I have, I'm gonna support one of my communities in my ward and they're gonna have to bring in receipts for all of the monies that they've spent. That's, that's ridiculous to me.
You have to buy it ahead of time.
That's ridiculous.
That's why I said...
I, is there some way that we can change that? I mean, is that something that we can't change?
It's the law.
Yeah, but you can, if it's something you need to buy, you can get Brenda to go with you and she'll buy it.
Yeah, that's what I did. We went and bought a whole bunch of hamburgers, hot dogs and bread and kept it moving.
Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna occupy Brenda with coming to me purchasing things.
Oh, Brenda loves to get shopping.
When I, when I can just go and, or have the person purchase these items, I know it's for National Night and submit the receipts back in, so that I just solve that problem.
Jared, you need receipts? I just need the receipts. Oh, I'll need receipts.
Now, I want to reiterate on something you said. For National Night Out, if I purchase plates and cups and napkins and I don't use them all, I got to bring them back to the city?
Yes, ma'am. It's part of, it's part of the policy, yes. That, yeah, we, the, the whole point of that is so that way people, it prevents unjust enrichment, so...
Well, I'm in violation there, 'cause I didn't do that last year. Nobody told me that last year.
Chief?
I, I'm just being transparent here, you know?
Lock her up, lock her up.
I, I did not know that.
Well, provided you utilize them for, uh, additional events, you know, that were city-related, then you're, then it's fine, you know? Uh, which I'm sure was the case, leftovers.
So we have two different ones. We have the thousand dollars and then something else, don't we?
Travel.
You got travel.
Travel.
Oh, no, okay. So the money that we took to give to Duff Fest came from the thousand dollars?
Uh, it came from, I believe, Mayor and Alderman Astor.
Yeah, the happer woman came in.
Yes. I don't need to...
Paul Jess.
I'm saying that's the, the money. So we, that money can be utilized for city-sponsored events or anything else, like community events.
Oh, like we did the banners.
Uh-huh?
We did the banners.
Right, I'm saying as long as it's something for the community, I mean, unless it has to be city, 'cause the city's already sponsoring it.
Yeah, we've got a policy of what's permissible and what's not.
Right.
And there's criteria, like in a, like the last year in office, you can't spend fifty percent of it, so nobody will spend all the money before you...
Maybe you should send that policy out to all of us and remake it some times, it doesn't, you know?
Is that the one I got from you, the special appropriation policy?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
But I thought we changed it though, where we didn't have to come to the board and say, hey, I'm going to do so much money.
That's correct.
Uh, you make the decision.
Yeah, yes, ma'am, that, that is correct. That, uh, the, this, this board adopted that policy, so that way you didn't have to come back before the open board...
We go to you, right.
Alderman Best, did you get your, are you able to spend that money this year with this in mind or do you still need help rolling that money over?
I'll get with the individuals and tell them to go out and purchase their plates or cups and napkins and...
Okay.
Whatever else that's not perishable, whatever that they can...
Okay.
Use for the event and submit the receipts back in.
And is there any kind of prepaid catering, like, uh, foods you can prepay?
Anything else?
That's it for me, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Kenzie?
All right, thank you, Ms. Brenda.
Alderman Best?
Uh, just a couple of things. Just wanted to remind the, or inform the public that this Saturday, May eighteenth, at four o'clock at the Fire Museum Park, there'll be the dedication of the No Burn Bear that was donated to the Fire Museum, and that's at four P.M., correct, Bob? Thank you. Is that right? Okay. And then I just have, Mark, if you don't mind, would you jot down, 'cause I have a problem evidently remembering this. Um, at Tuberna Circle and Old Airport Road, there is a street light that works sometimes and sometimes it don't. And then I also have had a request from a resident that lives in Lonely Pine about the possibility of placing a, an additional street light at Thurman Road and Waterscape. And I'm not exactly sure if that's even in the city. Part of it, I'm sure it is, but they, they said, just say it's terribly dark trying to make that turn off of Waterscape one to Thurman Road. So if you'd just let me know about those, please, thank you.
Alderman Harris?
Yes, um, after speaking with, um, the city manager, he suggested that, um, for the next meeting, Brenda, if you can make a discussion item for, um, the inspection reports that came back from Craven Terrace, just so that we have the public here, we want to let them know that we did our due diligence and what we found and kind of have a public discussion, um, not public discussion, a discussion with the board on the results. Um, and Mark said that they'll do a presentation on what they found. So that's for the next meeting.
Anything else?
That's it.
Alderman?
You know, I always have a laundry list and I apologize for that. Um, so recycling. I know that I've had several calls and questions about what we've decided. I know the county is going to do a once-a-month ninety-six-gallon container. Did we ever get any idea about additional costs and how, are we going to consider an additional pickup or anything? Is that something we should put on the agenda item on our next agenda to discuss? 'Cause I'm getting questions about, what did the city decide about recycling?
Did you, Matt responded with an additional cost for if we wanted to, and there were twice...
Right, but I, I mean, it's something probably that should probably either go on our agenda or whatever, if we're gonna discuss it or not discuss it or whatever. Was it additional dollar fifty a month?
Dollar?
Basically, what we can do is we can expand that once-a-month service that the county's providing to a twice-a-month service and the city would pay the additional dollar fifty per resident. And a part of that service, they would continue to use that ninety-six-gallon cart that's provided to the, uh, with the county service. So basically, it's, they'll still pay the four dollars and fifty cent or whatever it is on their, you know, a month for their tax bill with the county.
Oh, okay.
But then it would be an additional dollar fifty with the city for the second...
So that would be added onto their trash bill. So instead of fourteen fifty, it would be fifteen fifty, basically. Is that correct? Is that what ours is, fourteen fifty?
Fourteen seventy-five.
Fourteen seventy-five, so it would go plus a dollar fifty.
Correct.
Okay. I don't know what the board feels. Is that something we should put on the agenda and discuss or should we just not do anything about it? I've just been asked about it and...
I, I, I don't want to do it, but that's just me.
Yeah, I don't either.
Just keep in mind too that it...
What is wrong with having it for one month? I mean, once a month, once a month.
That's fine. I just, I, I, I was asked to ask the question, so I'm asking the question and...
And just keep in mind, in mind too, that the ninety-six gallon, we, we currently have sixty-five gallon containers.
Right.
Ninety-six is even bigger. So you've got a much larger container, um, and actually the totes that we have, those are seventeen gallons.
Seventeen gallons.
So, I mean, you take seventeen to multiply it by four, you, you're still...
When was this supposed to start again? So I know. When they change out my bins?
It'll be a while, 'cause they're having to purchase new trucks.
Yeah, yeah, they're anticipating that they'll continue the service as is until the switch over, which will probably be August or September.
Oh, okay, cool.
So this is gonna be an extra dollar fifty for our citizens?
If we decide that we want to do it.
No, I, I really don't want to do it because, like Mark says, a ninety-six-gallon container and it is recyclable, so it's not something that's gonna have a file older or anything with it like you would with your trash. So once a month pickup, I think it would be...
I just, just because we discussed it, we said, somebody, the people I was, have been speaking to or calling me saying, they never heard a resolution, what the city was going to do. I would, I would guess then by showing hands, we are, we are gonna let the county handle this totally, correct? Yes. Okay. All right, that answers my first question. Next question, um, Matt, you might want to stay here. Um, I'm getting questions about the traffic patterns in Gant with the Volt Center opening up. Mark, you may want to get this, um, uh, several of the residents in that Rem Street, second, is it Second Avenue or Second Street? Second Avenue. And that area, they're asking, I got pictures this afternoon of people are starting to park, just park along the side of the street. I don't know if they were workers or who they were, but, um, what are the traffic patterns gonna be? Or, or have we looked at that? Have we made that decision? Is that something we're putting out to the public to show them what the ingress and egress is going to be at the Volt Center and how we're gonna handle the traffic patterns there? I mean, I, I know there's a level of frustration for everybody, but I'm trying to ask the questions that are being asked of me.
Uh, traffic patterns, uh, were evaluated. I think that was something that was included in the plan, um, uh, with regards to the ingress and egress. I think there's, uh, an expectation that there's going to be a very large, voluminous, community college-level enrollment of students coming in and out of there. I don't think that's probably the case, uh, that while they will be having some classes, I don't know that it's gonna be, you know, like a, coming out of Murray County Community College. Um, we can get some numbers on to what their daily demand will be as far as classes and the generation of students, but, um...
I guess the question really is, can they turn, let, you know, not make a right and cut through Gant to get to Trent Road? Is there a way to put a sign that says no right turn? Or can we, you know, limit the amount of traffic going that way and feed it more towards, uh, Country Club Road to get to the highway? I think that is the concern of more traffic flowing through. We've gotten rid of the traffic now from the city garage and the fueling area. Is this just gonna come and replace it and everybody's gonna turn right to cut through to Trent Road? That's the concerns I'm getting from the Gant neighborhood.
Uh, I would, I, I guess my recommendation would be is, is, you know, look, we, we have implemented a lot of traffic control improvements in the Gant neighborhood. We're in the midst of a transition and I would recommend, prior to any decision being made of the board, being a traffic engineer and studying and, and actually being a consultant for many years, I, I would recommend to you that we allow the Volt Center to open up.
And see how...
Get some programming there, allow the road diet project to be completed, not when there's construction traffic on, on the road, not when we're paving the parking lot of the Volt Center, so the people are parking on the street to stay off of the road so they can, or stay off the parking lot so they can pave it. Allow this transition period to happen. Let us do some analysis, because we did it previously in the Gant community with traffic counts and everything else. That way we can kind of determine where these tra, where's the traffic going? Because if the majority of them are coming down Rem Street and they're hanging a left to go to the YMCA, that's one thing. If they're still continuing to do cut-through traffic, then yes, we probably should implement something to change those habits. Because we have taken a tremendous amount of load with the county vehicles and the city vehicles now that our garage is opened up, out of the Gant community. Um, and our service vehicles coming in there quite frequently. Um, we, we did some internal changes, but that would be my recommendation, is let's, let's get, get these projects completed, let something get open, and then let's see what that burden's gonna be. And we'll recalculate, rerun the numbers, put out the, the little trip counter so that we can find out how many trips are being generated and then we can, we can go from there.
It's more through the cut-through.
That's more of a strategic, objective decision-making process versus a subjective, you know, uh, spot, time, period that a picture may be taken or whatever of cut-through traffic. That way we can see what the daily count is, the weekly count, all that data can be compiled and then we can make an educated decision on what we do.
Could you put that in a memo to me so that I can forward it to the, um, president of the Gant Association?
Absolutely.
That would be helpful to me, thank you. Um, and then I just have a couple of announcements, um, and I'm sorry, Ms. Sampson isn't here, but on Saturday, May twenty-fifth, there's going to be a Dodge City Duffy Field Community Luncheon reunion. And, um, I was asked to, to tell anybody that lived in that area, grew up in that area. Um, the goal is to bring together the Dodge City Duffy Field Community from the past and present to celebrate their heritage. Um, and it's going to be from eleven A.M. to one P.M. The big field behind, beside the Sampson home where we used to play baseball, so, that's what the flyer says. Um, I'll try to get it up on Facebook as well. It's ten dollars per person. Um, Smithfield's barbecue and dessert will be served. So you can reach out to, um, Sharon Bryant, Marsha Sampson-Beasley, Barbara Sampson or Carolyn Sampson. So I think it's a good thing for the community. That's great. And then I wanted to mention that, um, the mayor and I were here this afternoon to welcome the Supreme Court of the state of North Carolina. It was really an honor for me and I know the mayor. And just so the board knows, um, all of the justices were presented the key to our city. And, um, they were most, most appreciative of that and, um, I was glad, thank you, Brenda, for getting those. Uh, it was a wonderful tribute for them to have, so it was really nice for them to be here. And I think it's gonna be a great day for them tomorrow, um, being in our historic courtroom, so it was just really nice and I was glad we were able to do that. That's it, ma'am.
I wanted to make the board aware that with the completion of the hallway, um, and, and some other things that are going on right here, uh, I've asked Alderman Bingle and she said she would be the historian for the city hall. We, we have, we, we, we just have a really need to archive and get all of this. We have things, well, Alderman Bingle, could you tell them a little bit about what you found?
I made a trip and tried to get this room together, tried to, for, we didn't, we didn't, we weren't able to do as much as we wanted to do. We added an additional picture that I found, um, downstairs in the basement, but, uh, I went from the attic to the basement and there's a lot of documents. There's a lot of, um, in our safe, incredible information and history for our city that really needs for the public to see. When people come into the studio, we have four more benches upstairs in the attic. They need a coat of orange, probably need a little bit of fixing, but Norm, Norm Better is awesome and he's able to repair and do these things. And that would be good to complete the back of our, um, room. Uh, Brenda gave me a folder that had pictures of Alderman going back to the fifties. You know, it'd be nice to get, what I told her we should do is probably scan those and digitize them and then put them in acid-free sleeves so they don't disintegrate and then make copies that we hang on the wall. And, you know, it's just, it's all... And, you know, it's just, it's our history, it's who we are and we should celebrate that history and to tell the story. So, um, I, I saw a lot, I saw a lot that was missing. So it was funny that, um, I was looking through things and I said, if I could just get ahold of Jim Hodges from the, um, New Bern Historical Society, you know, it'd be great, maybe he can share. And Brenda's my witness, I didn't finish the sentence and he happens to walk in the door of the city hall. So it was incredible. He walked in and I took him into the safe and we looked at things and he was just wowed by what we actually have here. So he, and you know, he, the Historical Society would be willing to work with us, this new African-American Heritage and Cultural Center. Maybe we could pull things together and really start to put things on our walls and make this place tell a story. Because there is a story to tell. So, Mayor, I would be happy to do that.
Thanks for doing that. We appreciate what you've already done and identified and, um, um, you, you remember all those pictures that were on the conference table and all that just needs to be preserved. Appreciate you doing that. Anything else on our new business at this time? Uh, we do need a closed session tonight?
Yes, sir. It's 1:43, 311, 832, maintain our attorney-client privilege.
So, move.
Motion to adjourn, all parties, motion to say aye?
Aye.
All parties, say, motion carried.
Can we stay in here, Scott?